Okay, I'd like to welcome all of you to our city council meeting. For the record, it is Tuesday, August 23rd at 6:00 PM. We'll start with roll call attendance. Ms. Strickler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Councilmember Byrd?
Here.
Item number two is our pledge of allegiance. If you'll all rise and join us in our pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Tim Pusey. He's with our Valley Shepherd Church of the Nazarene. If you all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, your word says, "This is the day that the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it." And we have much to rejoice in today as we reflect on your blessings in our lives. And we thank you. We thank you for this day and for all of its blessings, for life and health and for food to eat and roof over our heads and family and friends. And, Lord, we thank you for this community tonight. And yet, we humbly acknowledge our need for what you alone can do in our lives, for peace in the hearts and minds of people, for hope that sees beyond all the hardships and difficulties in life, and for love that's truly unconditional and unwavering in our lives, the kind of love we find in you. Tonight, I would pray for your special blessing upon our city council and our mayor. Lord, guide them in all the business that'll take place this evening. May the wisdom of Solomon and the courage of David and the love of Jesus permeate all they do tonight. And we'd ask that you'd continue to bless the people of Meridian and, Lord, that you would teach us all to love as Christ has loved us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
On the consent agenda 5B, request to vacate this from the agenda. On item 6B, the resolution number 16-1158, under action items 8B, the request by applicant to continue till October 25th, 2016. Item C, request by applicant to continue to October 25th, 2016. And item 8D is asked by the applicant to continue to September 6th, 2016. Item 8I, request by applicant to continue to September 6th, 2016. Item J has been requested by the applicants to continue to September 6th, 2016. And with that, I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. Item five is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
As stated earlier, item 5B has been asked to vacate from this agenda. And with that, I move we approve the consent agenda, the amended consent agenda, and for the mayor to sign, the clerk to attest.
Second.
And a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion by council? Madam Clerk, I mean, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Happen, Mr. Clerk. Okay, item 6A, under the mayor's office, council in front of you, I have three appointments of the four seats to bring to you tonight for the appointment of Rob McCarville for seat number two, the reappointment of Keith Byrd to seat number six, and the appointment of Rick Ritter to seat number seven. These will be through the end of their terms, and I would ask if there are any questions. Don't all jump in at once. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve the appointment, resolution, number 16-1158, appointing Rob McCarville to seat number two, reappointment of Keith Byrd to seat number six, and appointment of Rick Ritter to seat number seven of the board of the Meridian Development Corporation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 6B. If there's no discussion by council, I would ask for roll call attendance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. I know that we have one of the three here, well, two of the three, but Rick, do you have any comments?
No. I'm good.
Really?
Thank you.
Wow. Please let the record note. Well, thank you for your interest and your willingness to serve our urban renewal district. Okay, item 6C is under our solid waste advisory commission, and at this time, I know that there is an item that we didn't quite cover last week. I think we talked about this, and I will turn this over.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. Rodney Remminger with Republic Services, Business Unit Controller, 11101 West Executive Drive, Boise, Idaho. That's correct, Mayor. We presented to SWAC but inadvertently left one rate off of the presentation to this council, and that would be the fourth rate down on your second page for commercial combination lock replacement. This is for secured commercial containers that are secured by our customers, and if that lock breaks or is lost damaged in some way, they might request a replacement. That's what this rate is for. It would only incur if a customer requested it for those purposes, and the charge requested is 27.53. And that's the only change we have.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions?
None.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Cavanagh?
I do have a question, a couple, actually. I didn't see on this rate sheet anywhere, I'm sorry, I thought it was on, my apologies, any costs associated with the grass collection program, and I'm curious if I have missed that, and if so, my apologies, but if not, if you could articulate what that rate is? And I guess I was just looking for some form of an update on the success of that program.
That is a voluntary program or a service. It's not a required service, and that's a very small amount of the service, so I would request we take that offline, but that is probably less than 200 customers who sign up for that, and I'd have to guess at the rate, so I'd have to take it off.
Madam Mayor, maybe a follow-up then. Are there other voluntary services that aren't reflected on the sheet that we've been provided?
Better, no.
That would be the only one?
That should be on here, and I'm surprised that it's not. I didn't take a second to look for it.
Madam Mayor.
You were behind Rodney, so I had no idea who was talking. It was like, I know someone's here.
Madam Mayor and council, I believe Republic, Rochelle Klein, 111, or actually 2130 West Franklin Road, Meridian, Idaho, 83642, and I believe we bill that directly because it's not added, it's not a franchise service, and it's not part of the basic rate, so it's billed independently by Republic, so it wouldn't show up on this rate sheet that's approved by council. So, and I did, Councilman Cavanagh emailed me, and so I would like to actually offer to take the grass collection program offline and do a workshop for anybody who's interested in that, and also an update on what's happening with the regional composting facility that's going to be hopefully open next year if you guys are interested in more information about that.
I think that would be awesome, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any further questions from council?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, additional question. Can you give us just some, I guess, high-level explanation about how our rates and our rate increases compare to some of the other municipalities in the area that you serve? Are they the same because of the GPI, or are the rates increases more or less?
The rate increases are very, very similar. All of the contracts have various CPI adjustments. In other words, they use a different CPI or a different timeframe. When you stack the CPIs up, it's been about a year since I've done that, but I've analyzed the CPI changes by month and by type over a period of five or six years. I don't remember exactly, and the CPI change was very, very similar. Only when municipality changes the indice that they're using do you see a change. So, if you were to change the indice, you might see a significant increase or decrease because you're moving from indice to indice, but generally, the indices move in tandem, and your rate changes are very similar to what we've seen over the last year and a half. It doesn't look like I answered your question.
I'm just curious if our increase is more or less than compared to the other municipalities surrounding us?
They're very similar. We have different timeframes, and we have a consolidated rate schedule that we can bring back to you. Again, I would ask that it be offline, but Meridian's rates are about the middle of our rates. Come on.
Okay, sorry, I'm, you know, worst over-the-shoulder consultant here. You actually have a great setup because you have somewhat of a discount. This is the only contract that we have that's 90% of the CPI. So you have a fairly low CPI. You have the all items Western Index, which is a pretty standard. It's below the, there's a water, sewer, garbage index, which is generally more reflective of our actual costs, and you guys are in this great bucket with all items in the Western US, and so it's lower. And this year, it was, for residential rates, it was just over 1%, but you're the only city that I know of that only hits 90% of that index. So you're actually better off than most cities, if you ask me, but if you ask Rodney, he's the real numbers guy, but just so you know, this is the only contract I know that's scaled like that.
Rochelle is correct on the calculation of it. However, they're very, very similar. I mean, you're 1.02% in residential, you're 1.04 overall, the indices range in that range. I mean, they're very close.
Madam Mayor, I hate that I'm belaboring this. I guess I still don't feel like that I've got a direct answer. Is our increase more or less than the other municipalities that surround us?
Are you asking just for residential rates?
Correct, sure.
Okay, so yours would be, I mean, like Rodney's saying, that they all went up, yours went up 1%, and it depends on which rate level you have. So if you have a small container, it's going up, you know, you have a variable cart rate, so if you're the smallest cart rate, it's, you know, I'm guessing here, but let's say it's 14, 16, and 18 roughly, so you figure 1% of just the service and not the cart rent, so this, I mean, it's really small, and compared to others, it's probably, it's pennies one way or another, but you guys are.
In actual rate change, you're looking at a penny or two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, counsel, is there any further questions on this item? Not, Mr. Nary, the next steps are to bring an ordinance back or a resolution?
Madam Mayor, because of the, because of the one fee that hadn't been brought to you, they're going to begin the process of the noticing for the fee, so they pushed it back a couple weeks. I think originally it was supposed to come for the public hearing on the 6th, I believe. Now they've pushed it, I think, to the 20th, so they just need to do the process of the advertising, then we'll have a public hearing.
Okay, perfect. And I guess maybe as part of that, if you can have the different cities and what their rate increases are, that would answer some questions. Okay, thank you. Okay, there were no items moved from the consent agenda. We'll move into item eight under action items. Counsel, this first item is a public hearing to, as part of funding for Coal Valley Christian Schools, they're required to have a public hearing. I am opening this public hearing and want to talk about the purpose of this hearing. The hearing time appears in the notice that was published, and if anyone is here for that hearing, we will ask them to provide testimony, but it would be nice to know, as I have instructions here to talk about the public hearing, what I'm supposed to say other than it's a public hearing. This is a requirement for this funding, as I understand it. So, is someone here from Coal Valley? Would you like to make comment?
Brad Carr, Superintendent of Coal Valley, Madam Mayor.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you again, too. This is a formality, just like you said, I'm about as aware of what the needs are of this as you are. We're simply refinancing our public bond funding, or they're tax-exempt bonds, so we have to do a public hearing. And we're refinancing our building here, as well as we just purchased the church that's in our parking lot, the Apostolic Church, and we're looking to finish off our project on the corner of Second and a Half and Carlton Street with removing the crack house and turning it into something beautiful.
Well, I can tell you that your field looks awesome.
Thank you.
And what a nice improvement to that whole area.
Yeah, so we want to finish that off. We're going to remodel that house and have it look nice with a nice garden area there, and it should look really nice when it's done.
Oh, yes, I was part of the discussions on what we envisioned that house could be once you bought the property, so I'm excited to hear what your decision is.
Well, we're going to keep the house and remodel it. It's going to look very similar on the outside to what it originally looked like as a little craftsman house. The inside will be a meeting room and restrooms and things like that, so.
Very cool.
All right.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for being such a great community partner.
Thank you very much.
We hope to have some of your students on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council this year.
I know you do, and we're working on that. Thanks.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and it is a hearing on, that is required by their public financing to be on a public entity's agenda for the public to comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to provide comment on this item? Okay, hearing done, I will officially close the public hearing, and now what?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if there's anything to approve.
Okay.
Other than the.
Just need the public hearing.
That's what I understand.
Okay. Well, you know, just, you're blessed, and.
Madam Mayor.
We're so experienced at this, but thank you, Brad, yes.
Madam Mayor, question for Bill.
Ms. Holman.
Or Mr. Nary. There is a form that we signed saying the public hearing happened and all of that, and I believe, Mr. Clerk, the mayor signs that, so I don't know if we need any sort of approval for her to sign that document.
If simply acknowledging that the hearing was held, then I think that's all that's necessary. I don't think the council has to approve that. I think the acknowledgement that we've had the hearing, this is for the, just for the record, it's called the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, so I think the acknowledgement can be signed by the mayor without any additional action of the council.
And thank you for telling us what T E F R A means. Okay, so we will move to the next item, and that's item B that has been requested to continue to October 25th. I would ask staff, if you could, on the record, just give us the reason this request was made.
Madam Mayor, the reason that I believe that they're asking for another extension is there's some interest in the property, and they're doing some due diligence to figure out if the changes that they're looking at potentially doing will fly and get a concept plan put together. So that would hold true for both B and C on the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I would need a motion to continue.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we continue the public hearing on H 20160008 and H 2016038 till October 25th, 2016.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue both items A, B, and 8C to October 25th, 2016. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. Okay, item 8D is final plat, also requested by the applicant to continue to September If I could ask the reason for this continuation?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that one I'm not sure of. I'm pinch-hitting for Sonya, but I don't, she didn't put in my cheat sheet, so, but I know the applicant's representative is here, so they can explain a little bit better.
There was a reason.
Or at all.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Mike Wardle of Brighton Corporation, 12601 West Explorer Drive. This item and the other two items, I and J, on your agenda that have also been requested for deferral are abutting properties. And you'll recall when we revised the Bainbridge preliminary plat several years ago, there was a 15-foot corridor that we had proposed along the southern boundary in anticipation of kind of mirroring that, so that's the reason that these were deferred together, so that we could work out details, which were primarily worked out yesterday, and we'll come back to you on the 6th with recommendations for approval in both cases. So unless you have questions, that would be the short answer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, this item has been requested to continue to the 6th of September. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we continue the final plat, H 20160094, to September 6th, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item 8D to September 6th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. Item 8E is the final plat for H 2016-0099. I will ask for staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As I just mentioned, I'm going to cover for Sonya this evening on this project, this final plat called TM Crossing. It is the first phase in the subdivision. The site consists of 36.54 acres of land, Zone CG. It is located at the northeast corner of I-84 and South 10 Mile Road within recently established urban renewal district. There were, or are, 50 preliminary plat lots and four common lots. What you see before you this evening is, again, the first phase of that, which consists of 20 commercial building lots and one common lot. You do have a letter in your packet from the applicant dated August 18th, and then a follow-up memo from staff dated the 23rd of August today. There was a meeting, as Mr. Wardle just mentioned yesterday, to discuss some of the comments that were brought forth in his letter dated the 18th, and after that meeting, we've agreed to some changes to the conditions for approval, so I'd like to read those into the record, and if you have any questions, we can certainly run through them. But we would recommend that site-specific, number one, there be no change to that one. Condition number four, to correct the engineer's name as requested by the applicant. Conditions, site-specific conditions number 10 and 11, that we would delete those or remove those entirely. And general conditions number three, amend those as requested. Number eight, under general condition, amend as requested. Number 19, amend as requested. And number 23, amend as requested by the applicant. As you know, the applicant is here, but we basically, again, concurred with the changes requested in his letter dated August 18th, and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you. Caleb, counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor, once again, Mike Wardle of Brighton Corporation, 12601 West Explorer Drive in Boise. As you're obviously aware from what we prepared and provided, there were some significant issues still to be resolved, and meetings yesterday, Mr. Stewart and Mr. Turnbull and the other Mr. Wardle got together and addressed the significant issues relative to the pressure irrigation system. The conclusion was that we will make provision for that eventuality, but the city staff also acknowledges that there are some challenges that they face in order to make that a reliable and consistent possible source. So the recommendations or concurrents notations of staff this evening address all of those issues, and unless you have questions, I would not take more of your time.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, counsel, if there's no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve the final plat, H 20160099, and to include staff and applicant comments.
Second.
Motion is second to approve item 8D. Mr. Clerk, will you cover all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. Item 8F is a public hearing continued from August 16th on H 2016-0087. We will open this public hearing with this continued public hearing with staff comments, and this was about a specific item.
Correct, Madam Mayor. This is both the development agreement modification and, less so, the final plat modification, but they are one in the same application number. So the direction from council last week was to meet with the applicant to discuss and come up with, if possible, conditions for allowing up to, it was for, this, the original application was for four early start building permits. The applicant has since requested only two early start permits, and as you see in the memo before you and on the slide that I will show here, staff did our best in conjunction with the applicant and the legal department to come up with some conditions that feel a little bit more comfortable now, but there are still some concerns as to issues that could arise based on previous experience doing things like this. But these are the conditions here. Originally, last week, we just had C. We've modified that a little bit to this present form, as well as D through J, that were some concerns that the legal department brought up. I'm not sure if Mr. Nary has some additional insight on this application, but we've discussed it thoroughly with fire, public works, land development, as well as legal, and this is the best that we could come up with at this time.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
The applicant, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Nary.
That's okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you look at all these conditions...
If you look at all those conditions, part of the dialogue discussion last week was the risk to the city, both for the early starts, if they're built at the wrong place, what happens if people move in, they sell. The city won't give occupancy because of those things. So we've tried to capture that in these conditions, but in my opinion, it's still not a good idea. The process exists for a reason, and it isn't just because the government loves process, but because we want to make assurance that in the future, that the land is divided properly, that it's recorded properly, that the easements are recorded properly, that the requirements of development are met properly. And doing them out of sequence like that, more often than not, ends up with a problem. So we've tried to capture as much as we can. I don't know if, you know, if nothing happens, then it's great. But as I mentioned last week, we would like some direction or guidance on, do we need to establish an alternative process and what it takes? As you see, we went from one additional comment last week to allowing this to eight. And that's for two lots. I can see someone else coming in with a large-scale sub and saying, I want to build 400 homes and I only need 10 early starts. And that doesn't seem like very many. But that's 10 individual things that we have to try to come up with. So we've tried to capture your concerns. If the, if the question again is, is there a risk to the city, the answer is yes. I don't know how significant it is because nothing's happened yet. So that's, I guess, my cautionary tale of what we've tried to put in here and, and for you to think about in that particular request. There isn't a concern on the second request about the modification to the plat about the, in regards to, I think, the creek and the pathway and those kinds of things. That's not the issue. It really is these early starts that can be problematic.
Thank you. Mr. Cavanagh?
Sorry, my mic keeps going off. Question for staff. Josh, if I heard you right, it sounds like in addition to the conditions that have been outlined, staff still has some additional concerns. But I didn't hear you share what those were. I thought it might be poignant to address those. And I don't know if that was what you were looking for from Mr. Neri, if there were additional.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, that is essentially what our concerns are. Like Mr. Neri said, there, we have, we have a process. And as you see, based on the, the time that was spent coming up with these conditions, these early starts tend to take a lot more staff time to track, to make sure that there are no issues, to make sure that the homes are constructed in the setbacks when we don't have a legal lot. So we have to make sure that, go through some extra steps to make sure that the home is constructed how it needs to be, where it needs to be. It's a little bit difficult to make sure that all those things are taken care of, as well as to track potential staff changes, depending on how long it takes for this process to go through and making sure everyone's aware. So it can be problematic.
Madam Mayor, additional follow-up. Josh, and I hate to put you on the spot on this one. Are these types of requests we're starting to see more often from developers? Or have you had conversations with the development community about doing early starts? And does that pose a bigger question that regardless of the decision here tonight, do we need to look at some other processes to respond to the demands of the development community?
As far as personally, maybe, I don't have personal experience as to whether or not the development community is in favor of these or not. I'm not as knowledgeable about that. I know that in the, in the past year and a half that I've been with the city, we've had two or three different subdivisions that have asked for this. One being the one that the applicant mentioned last, last week, Da Vinci Park, as well as another one that we approved earlier this summer for the Whiteacre subdivision. But I, I don't know from personal experience whether the Da Vinci Park has had any issues. The Whiteacre project is very early in the development. But as we're going through this and then kind of analyzing it a little bit more, we're seeing the potential issues that, that could arise. And I don't, as Mr. Neri said, I don't know that we will have an issue, but there are, there are some risk there. I'm not sure if that directly answered your question.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to make comment?
Madam Mayor and counsel, Bob Unger, ULC Management, 6104 North Gary Lane, Boise, Idaho, 83714, representing CS2 LLC. I think, you know, as, as Josh pointed out, you know, I met with staff last Thursday to discuss our hearing from last Tuesday. And I proposed some modifications to the 51C. And we had a great meeting. We discussed some of the issues and concerns. Staff made some additional modifications to what I had proposed. And then this afternoon, I got the additional conditions, D through J, provided by legal staff. And first of all, I want to, I want to say we're, we're fine with those conditions. We have no issues with those. I mean, I think legal staff did a great job of putting specific conditions in there that, that protect the city. And I think that was a big concern by the council. And as staff said, we've decided to modify our request from, down from four early starts to two early starts. And the reason for that is, Josh, can you pull, do you have that map?
I don't think I do have it in the slide, Bob.
Okay. We've specifically identified two lots. One on, we have two parcels in the north section of this phase of the project. We have two parcels. So we've identified one lot that is located in one parcel and one lot that is located in the other parcel. In the event that something were to go astray, we would have a house on one parcel and a house on another parcel. And they could move forward, you know, ultimately, and, and get a COO based upon those two individual parcels and parcel numbers. What we would provide for, for, for our builder is a meets and bounds legal description that matches identically the dimensions and locations of these two lots that we're proposing to build on. And I do have to correct myself from, from last Tuesday evening, when the question came up about the purchase of the lot from the builder. The way, as I understand now, after discussing it with the, with the owner, the way that works is that the builder buys the particular piece of property based upon that meets and bounds legal description, which is prepared by our surveyor. He pays us for that piece. And the legal description is retained by the title company until such time as the plat is recorded. So we do get paid by the builder at that time and not down the road. Okay, so, and that's one of the, one of the reasons that we're requesting these two early starts is to help our cash flow and also to allow the builder to get an early start on the two model homes. We have two different builders and they would each have one model home that they would be able to show. You know, as soon as the plat is recorded, they'd be able to show and start hopefully selling other homes within the subdivision. I know that, and I said it last week, you know, that in Da Vinci Park, we got two early starts based upon the two parcels that we had. There were no issues whatsoever on those two early starts. I mean, we went out with our surveyors, we staked the lots appropriately. The buildings were built on the lots. They met all of the setback requirements. And when the plat was recorded, they matched perfectly. So it's something we've done before. We know the process to make sure that we don't run into any issues. But once again, as legal staff has pointed, put in the conditions, we would assume all responsibilities and release the city of any liabilities if that were to happen. So based upon that, we would hope and ask for your approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Not being of legal mind, but I know you can sit here, you can sign papers and everything else that releases the city from any responsibility. But let me tell you something, if it happens, and it's not like the normal process or the normal legality that we always do, I can guarantee you that we're going to put money out to defend ourselves. We're going to be listed.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing on this item for the development agreement. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we close the public hearing on H-2016-0087.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 8F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All eyes must be carried.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I don't have a motion. I'm really torn on this. I, I would like to help the developer out. I don't like the city taking risks. I, they have somewhat of a proven track record. So I keep going back and forth. And if these things are going to come forth in the future, we probably should have, I know we already have procedures, but if we're going to have an alternate procedure, it should probably include some additional fees to cover the additional staff time. I mean, that's just a thought. I, I feel for them. I want to, I'd like to help them move their project along. I don't think they're going to have a problem. I also don't want to set a precedent so that every developer comes in and wants to have early starts and creates problems because somebody cut down the rope, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I have a question for Chief Neymeyer. Although the hearing's closed, I don't know if we need to reopen it to gather that information or not?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Borton, if you're just asking staff a question, I don't, we don't, really don't worry about that.
Chief, when you look on the map that's up there, that what was provided earlier, and I failed to mention this when Mr. Unger was up here, I think it was lots two and three. The lots closest to the existing fire hydrant across the street were two of the four lots proposed to be early starts. It now appears as though one of the two early start lots is four lots to the north, if I'm orienting that right. Is that still within the acceptable distance from the existing fire hydrant?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Borton, I did talk to Chief Palmer. Chief Palmer, Rick Jackson, met with the applicant. We're still within 150 feet of that fire hydrant, so we can lay enough supply line during construction if we were to have a fire in that area.
Madam Mayor, even at that new lot location?
I just texted Chief Palmer to confirm that, and he did review that and approve it.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
While we're asking staff questions, I got a question for Josh. You'd brought up Whiteacre. How does, how do these two lots, I guess, how does this situation compare to what we did with Whiteacre? Do you remember off the top of your head?
I don't off the top of my head. I, I can pull up that development agreement if you'd like me to, to look at that while you're deliberating up there.
Sure, I guess the, the reason I ask is because I, I remember there was, there was no concern about the head start on, on those two lots. I remember, you know, we were just getting after the developer about how quickly he could get the sidewalk in because he needed enough dirt to have the berm to then put the sidewalk on. And it wasn't going to have that in Phase 1. And that was the entirety of the discussion. I don't remember any concern over him getting, getting moving.
Madam Mayor.
Warren.
I was not here at the hearing last week to hear all of the testimony, but I did want to provide, Councilman Cavanagh, or Councilman Cavanagh asked a question about other similar situations. We did have, not exactly in this format, but similar situation where we were asked to approve construction in advance of the normal process. Couple of instances that I can think of, the Oaks Development, we allowed them to build some model homes and start one of the phases of the subdivision before they had off-site infrastructure available to serve that. And without going into a lot of details, that turned out very badly for us. The other one was the Overland Park Apartments. We allowed them to start construction on the Overland Park Apartments in advance of having infrastructure in place to serve that with a lot of promises and everything else. And without going into detail, that turned out very badly for us too. So I would just be cautious. Anytime we have a tendency to go outside of our normal process, the checks and balances that we have in place to make sure that certain things are done before we allow other things to move forward, they're thrown out of timing and out of whack. And unless you've got people that are just babysitting those things, it gets very difficult to monitor. So just a word of caution. It may not be exactly this situation, but it is similar.
Warren. Any other questions from counsel? I have a motion from counsel.
Madam Mayor, before you get to a motion, I was, I was looking at the Whiteacre application that Councilman Palmer asked. So in that particular instance, part of the difference is, is the developer was going to retain ownership of the parcels. So he was going to build them and retain ownership, and then they get planted, and then they'd be sold. These are going to sell in conjunction with the building, with, with the building of the lot. So it's a little bit different. So that's the difference, I think, between those two.
And Madam Mayor, can I just follow up a little bit on that? I was gonna, gonna point this out, but that is one of the, the process we have established also protects a developer. Because in this scenario, if, if lots, they aren't lots yet, but they're meets and bounds legal descriptions of real property that someone else owns now, they have to sign that final plat. They're now a signator on the plat with the developer. So any lands, if you own it, you're, John Hancock goes on the Mylar that gets signed and recorded down at the county's office. If by some chance this deal goes bad with the, the builder now, and they say, I'm not signing the plat, we don't have a final plat anymore because legally they have to sign the plat. So part of that process, again, so people don't sell property ahead of development. I'm not saying that'll happen here, but it has happened before. It's almost the reverse of these old farmhouses that are out there, and they split them off and then you develop around it. It's almost the inverse of that. Where you got somebody now that's building a new lot, but they don't want to be part of the subdivision anymore. They said, no, I just, I don't want to be part of your HOA, or for whatever reason, and they don't sign the plat. So again, it just makes it a lot cleaner if we've got, the legal description is a lot and block and not a meets and bounds description, that we, everyone understands what that is and can move forward. So just another, and if I may, just real quick, what I would propose, and certainly you guys provide us the direction, and we can come up with something. It'll probably mirror real similarly the conditions you see here tonight. But I don't, I don't personally believe that we should come up with a process to do this. I think it would be better on a case-by-case, one-off basis. If there's justification for it, we'll look at it, we'll get with fire, whoever those folks are, and we'll say, here's the package. I'll be honest, we probably won't recommend them very, approval of that very often. But instead of saying, you know, kind of encouraging folks to do this, I think we can still look at it like we're doing now. But I think it maybe gives the wrong impression to, and I don't disagree. I mean, I want to help the development community where we can, but as Warren states and Bill stated, not every time, but these blow up in our face a lot of times, and it becomes just a headache. So just my two cents.
Thank you, Caleb.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I, I feel that this is something that I personally can't right now. And I do feel bad because it was another public entity, as I understood, that held it up. And they do need to get started before the snow flies, but I, I, I just don't think that I'm ready to put the city out on the limb that I think we are putting it out on. Probably, it would probably go perfect, no worries, but there's always that chance that it won't. So with that, I would move that we deny H 2016-0087 the modification to development agreement to allow developers to receive four building lots prior to recording a final plat.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second to deny the request for the early start and the modification. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I do, among several other things, I agree with, with Caleb with regards to a process or not. These very well might be best considered as one-off, rare, unique circumstances with special findings that oftentimes might not be appropriate for the very reasons why we have the process that's been described by our staff. So I agree with the motion, and I also agree with not opening the door to try and facilitate doing things out of order as requested, unless there's a really unique circumstance.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Berg?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item 8G is a final plat, continued from August 16th on H 2016-0087.
So this was continued again from, from last week. Essentially, the applicant is looking to modify the final plat fairly minimally. As you see on the left is the currently approved final plat. This is the landscape plan. The applicant is proposing to take the pathway outside of the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District's easement due to their requirements, and to modify what was Lot 4 to a common lot, and to place the pathway through that common lot. With that, there are a couple of other changes that are required. Plat note number seven, currently this plat does not indicate that Lot 4 Block 1 is a common lot for the subdivision. The plat note needs to be revised to indicate this as a common lot, that shall be owned and maintained by the HOA, as well as to modify condition 5B to read, "Lot 4 Block 1 shall be designed to include the 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway and landscapes standards set forth in the UDC, et cetera." Staff is recommending approval. I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? The applicant here?
It's the same project.
Oh.
Yep.
No comment.
Madam Mayor.
Borton.
There's no comment. I would move that we move item H 2016-0095, the final plat for Volterra Heights subdivision.
Second.
Motion.
The one before.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, wrong one.
B.
Strike that.
Item G.
The final plat, final plat for H 2016-0087.
Second.
For Creason Creek.
I have a motion, a second to approve item 8G. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Berg?
Aye.
Carey. 8H is a final plat. Mr. Borton was trying to move this agenda along, but we'll hear this one on H 2016-0095. I will ask for staff comments.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, this, there really are no issues with this. It's a final plat. The entire office of WH Pacific was out of town last week, so we were not able to get the email in agreement with all staff conditions. We did receive that email today. The applicant is in agreement with all of the conditions of the, of the final plat.
Thank you, Josh. Counsel, any questions for staff? Can have any comments?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
I move that we approve H 2016-0095, final plat for Volterra Heights subdivision.
I have a motion, a second to approve item 8H. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Berg?
Aye.
All ayes, Mr. Carey. Item 8I has been requested to continue to September 6th, and we heard the previous explanation on, on this request. Counsel, do I have a motion to continue?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I move we continue the final plat on H 2016-0096.
Second.
To September 6, 2016, I'm sorry.
Second agrees with the date. I have a motion, a second to continue item 8I to September 6. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes, Mr. Carey. A is requested to continue to September 6.
Madam Mayor.
Borton.
I move we continue H 2016-0097 to September 6, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to continue item 8J to September 6. All those in favor say aye.
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 Item 9A is under presentation from our fire department, and I'll turn this over to Chief Neumeyer.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening and thank you. Looks like we just lost our person. Could you possibly quick on the presentation? Absent. So I will, I'll preface this while we get the presentation up. This will be a little bit longer than my normal presentation, so I do thank you for your time this evening as we go through this. About two months ago, I did present each one of you with a copy of our regional master plan. Again, 186 pages, it's hard to pack that into 10 minutes. So this will be a little bit longer. This is an informational presentation, so I hope to gather some dialogues, some conversations, some questions that you may have, with a goal of coming back to you within 30 days after you've had a chance to kind of digest the information, with the hope that you will look to adopt the, the master plan, and hopefully in between that time, you'll reach, reach out with any questions that you may have. If I lose my voice, I'm sorry. I kind of got some chest congestion in San Antonio, and I'm hoping it's not Zika virus. It was raining the whole time, and big mosquitoes out, so I apologize for that. So just a little bit of back history on how we got here, and I know I talked to you about this before as well, but just to recap, this started as a project between the City of Meridian and the Meridian Rural Fire District, looking at how growth in current conditions and then future growth conditions are going to affect us and how we plan for that appropriately. As we had that conversation, and I was discussing this with the mayor and with Councilman Borton, our liaison, and the district commissioners, we also understood that that growth is happening also in fire districts around us. So how do we affect growth together? I've mentioned before, the last thing we want to do is build a fire station and have another jurisdiction build one a mile away, and then answer to the taxpayers of why didn't you coordinate this better. So we did reach out to our partner agencies, our neighboring agencies. As you all know, we had STAR Fire District jump on board, both through the approval of their board and then financially to help support the project. CUNA, we reached out to them, they made the decision not to participate at this time. The other jurisdictions in Ada County had recently completed a master plan. That discussion and approval with STAR led to a discussion with their partners that have the same issues of border growth, and so that's how we got to the point where we had four agencies involved in this plan. Since that time, Nampa has also been in discussions with us about how their boundaries are going to grow with ours, and how we look at that in the future as we move forward. Try the arrow. I told you how much I love this. So an overview of the process. Once we elected to go with a consultant emergency services consulting international, they conducted site visits on November 16th through the 19th. During that time, we also had formed a citizen task force. One of the things that I requested during the development of this plan, I've been a part of plan development before, typically you have with consultants, a citizen group that comes in for one evening, and so it's about two hours, and they get an analysis from the citizens and feedback from the citizens. I've always found that to be a little bit deficient in my mind. I would like a citizens group that goes through the entire process, so beginning, middle, and end, and that's what we did with this project. So you can see there, the citizen task force, made up of citizen representatives from each of the jurisdictions, including the City of Meridian and the Meridian Rural Fire District, met on November 18th, met on February 24th, and then met on April 13th. During the site visit, ESI also conducted an environmental scan. They met with elected officials, the internal fire department staffs, and then also with those citizens. From there, they took the information that they gathered, along with data that we had provided to them, did an evaluation of the current conditions that we have today, and then looked at future system demand and how that future system demand could be planned for. And then they looked at also future delivery system models, and how we could then deliver service to meet the demand for the future. And then lastly, they produced the, the report that you have in front of you. That is not what I wanted. Little help? I really don't know much about this slide. I didn't develop it.
Do you have a plat?
I don't. I do not have a final plat to review. All right, we'll try again.
Mr. Borton.
Real quick, Chief, can you, can you remind us the, the agencies that were all participating in the financial contribution towards this effort?
Absolutely. So the agencies that participated were the Meridian Rural Fire District, the City of Meridian, STAR Fire Protection District, Middleton Rural Fire Protection District, and the City of Caldwell. The total cost was $70,000. We allocated that equally based on the number of stations. It's the most fair way we could come up with a compensation that paid for the entire plan. Thank you. So an overview of the services provided, this was an overview that we did give the citizens as well as they went through their process. So currently, the Meridian Fire Department provides the following services today. Fire suppression in all structures, all vegetation fires, and all other fires. We provide emergency medical services at the ALS non-transport license, ALS meaning advanced life support. We do provide vehicle rescue and extrication operations at the operations level. What that means at the operations level is that we have the knowledge and the training and the tools and the skills and abilities to go out and perform that function. So we do cut up cars, we, that's a bad term. We do extricate folks from vehicles when they're in crashes, and cut up cars is not the right term. We do provide in Meridian, fire cause and origin determination. So when we do have a fire, our investigators go out and identify the cause of the fire and where that fire started. We do provide fire code development, inspection, and enforcement. We do provide fire and life safety public education through our public education division. The last two, we provide at what's called the awareness level. Both hazardous materials response and then still-in-swiftwater rescue response. The awareness level means that we are aware and trained and educated in hazardous materials and in swift water and still water rescue, but we do not have the capability to do that on our, on our own. Hazardous materials are done through regional teams in the state of Idaho. Our two teams that support us are the Boise hazmat team and then the Caldwell hazmat team. Those are the two regional teams we have in this area. Still-in-swiftwater rescue require you have a dive team. We don't have a dive team. The City of Boise has a dive team, Eagle Fire Department has a dive team, the Sheriff's Department has a dive team. So if we do have a rescue that involves anybody getting in the water, we do have teams that help support us. So those are the services that we provide today. It was also important to at least discuss the services we don't provide, to make sure the, the citizens that went through this understood what we do and what we don't provide. Currently, we don't provide technical rescue, rope, confined space, trench, heavy machinery, and building collapse. Technical rescue involves a lot of training and a lot of funding, quite honestly. It's, it's expensive to maintain. The one thing that does concern us, I've had conversations with Dennis Teller and Tom Berry about this, is when our water department goes into the wells and does a confined space entry, I've made sure that they understand we are not their rescue team right now. We do not do confined space. So we do have contingency plans for that. They notify us every time they go into the well, so we are aware every time they do go in the well. But that is a service that we understand that, that we should be providing. It is a matter of looking into the future to determine if we need to provide that service. Some others are very obvious. ARF, we do not have an airport. I appreciate the city not having an airport. Having airport firefighting is a whole new ballgame, and so we don't have to worry about ARF in the city. TacMed, those are tactical paramedics attached to law enforcement, typically to the SWAT teams. The tactical paramedics, I don't have a lot of interest in our, in our paramedics carrying guns right now. Ada County does have a team, they, sorry, John, I apologize. Ada County does have a team that is attached to the SWAT teams with Ada County. Community paramedicine is a, is an evolution in medicine where the, the paramedics are getting out in the community doing follow-ups. When somebody goes into the ER and comes out, the community paramedics are going out and doing follow-ups to ensure that the proper care is being given. What that has done is we are seeing a massive reduction in re-entries into the ER from folks that have an issue as they, as they get discharged. Currently, Ada County Paramedics is providing that service. We do not do ambulance transport. Incident management teams, I talked a little bit earlier about we do incident scene management or incident command. An incident management team is when you have a very significant large-scale event and you need to bring in an incident management team. It's logistic support, it's planning support, it's financial support. There is a lot of discussion right now on a regional team approach because no city, including the City of Boise, has the resources to be able to provide that service. There has been some discussions on a regional approach to that. Emergency management is done through Doug Hardman's office, through, used to be ACOM, I believe now it's the Ada County Disaster Services Department. I'm taking a swag there. I can't remember what their new name is. Doug Hardman's office. And then arson investigation. We do not do arson investigation. To do that under the code, we have to have our investigators deputized. We have a great relationship with Meridian PD. We've actually sent a couple of their folks back to the National Fire Academy for arson investigation, so we work very closely with Meridian PD. The other thing you need to have is, if you're going to do arson investigation, if you've watched whatever it is, Boston Fire, whatever that Chicago Fire, I don't watch it, you have to have the storage space and capacity to store evidence for a period of X amount of years. We do not have that capacity. So arson investigation, we've had a great relationship, we're going to continue that in the future. So as we went through the citizen survey, and one of the things that I was really fortunate enough to experience when we went to Washington on the priorities of government exercise and talking to cities that had, had done that, we essentially did our own little mini version of a priorities of government exercise within the fire service and asked the citizens, "What do you want? Where are your priorities as far as fire service and the services we offer?" Not surprisingly, fire suppression and emergency medical response were one and two. As we talked, and J.C. Holman can attest to this, as we talked to cities throughout Washington, typically what they saw in their priorities of government exercise were law enforcement, patrol, and fire suppression was one and two in various forms. And so this did not surprise us. Fire prevention services, code enforcement, was number three. Community education was number four, and then kind of a distant fourth and fifth, or fifth and sixth, I guess, would be hazardous materials response and technical rescue response. Quite honestly, those are low-frequency, high-risk type calls that just doesn't get the public eye quite a bit. So it wasn't surprising to us to see how the citizens ranked the services they wanted. The citizens were also asked, "What should be the planning priorities of the fire department moving forward?" The first two did not surprise us at all. Ensure technical competence of the responders. They want to make sure and know that when the responders come out, they're trained well, and they're going to do a good job. So that did not surprise us. And then second was improve the outcomes of the emergencies we respond to. Don't let my house burn completely down. Make sure you get to us quickly and improve the Make sure you get to us quickly and improve the outcome of my father, wife, husband that's having a heart attack, et cetera. And so those two did not surprise us. The third was really a planning function to make sure that our capital improvement plans and the way we maintain what we have is maintained. And so we completely agree with that. Again, didn't really surprise us a whole lot to say, we want to make sure we ensure our facilities and equipment are reliable and functional. We don't want you showing up and having things not work. Kind of the fourth and fifth were a little bit surprising. The fourth was partner with allied emergency services agencies to improve services and increase efficiencies. And then fifth was establish performance standards that match community expectations. We'll talk a little bit about that when we get to the response time discussion. It was an interesting dialogue. Then you can see the last two, utilize technology, data, and analysis for sound decisions. For me, this was a little tough because I believe that we should be using data and analysis to make good informed decisions moving forward. But from a citizen standpoint, it was lower on their priority list as far as planning. And then last was partner with community to manage cost. That one was also very interesting for me to see. I was expecting that to be a lot higher. Last thing with the citizen survey, they were asked about staffing, response, and cost. Obviously, we had to give a little bit of background information to them on the cost that it takes to run a fire department. And so when it came to staffing, they were asked, do you feel the fire department is understaffed, overstaffed, or appropriate? The vast majority were in that appropriate. Obviously, there's a big chunk there in understaffed, as we talked about how many resources it takes to get to the scene. But I believe that we are doing a good job collectively when we respond with mutual aid to meet the staffing needs as far as some of our emergencies go. On the response side, nobody thought we were too heavy. Seventy-five percent overwhelming majority said, we feel that the response that you send out is appropriate. And then 25% felt that it was a little bit too slow or too light. And then on cost, we did have 6.2% say we're too expensive. And we had 37% say we're appropriate. Forty-three percent said, continue to explore and find new fiscal tools to meet the demand of the service. So as far as the projections go that ESCI presented in their plan, I know you've seen this before, or a version thereof. I've been here in front of other master plans or other planning that has been done by other departments. You've seen this graphic in the compass 2040 projections. This is very similar. ESCI took a look at it two different ways. One is the forecast total and one is the growth rate total. I believe the forecast total more accurately resembles the compass 2040 projections. The growth rate tool is simply looking at historical growth in the past and then using a formula to project that out. You'll see some discrepancy there, but either way, what you're looking at is a steady increase through 2040. We've seen that in many presentations that have been before you in the past. Likewise, they project out what our call volume is going to be. And so just as population is going to increase, we know population drives calls for service. And so we anticipate that as population increases, so too will the call volume. As far as the breakout there goes, and Councilman Bird and I have had several discussions about that other category, I know he really, really likes that. The NIFRS is the National Fire Incident Reporting System that we are required to report to the federal government on a monthly basis. They have this other category that we are required to report and contains about 30 different call types within that other category. I don't personally agree with all the categories being put into an other category, but they are nonetheless. So you can see the breakout that ESI projects as far as the fire response calls, the medical calls, and the other category. I won't get into all the details of all those call types, but it ranges everything from a false alarm, a commercial fire alarm, a residential fire alarm, a good service call, somebody has a smoke detector chirping, they need us to come out and take a look at it. But it also can get into some call types that quite honestly, I believe, lie within either the fire EMS category. I don't have control over how we report that. That's a federal requirement, so I will leave it at that. You know my opinion on the reporting side. And then ESCI also does a projection of budget. Obviously, this is a projection, as we know, annual to annual, the budget cycle can change, the budget impact can change. So this is just what they project based on historical budget analysis prior to 2016. I can tell you that there is a typo there. This is not 20,116 year, it's 2016. I couldn't change that in the graphics, so it was a typo on their part. So getting into responses and the piece within the master plan that discusses responses, and I'll come back to this picture a little bit later. This was taken, as you can see, July of this year. Typically, you think of our truck company going out on structure fires and on fires that we need the truck to participate in. This was a pretty unique situation. There's a gentleman that was on a residential roof, and he had fallen from one peak down to a lower level of the roof, was hurt pretty bad. The only way we could get him down was actually to bring our ladder truck out, and you can see him up on the Stokes basket. That was the only way possible to get him down. We had looked at doing ground ladders and it was not safe to do. So our truck does have a variety of uses other than just the structure fires they respond on. So this is an overview of the emergencies by agency. You can see us in the second column there. ESCI, when they did their analysis, going looking at year end, we actually do a calendar year. So we do January 1 through December 31st. That ties in with somewhat the CAD system and some of the data that we can retrieve. When ESCI came in, we had not yet completed 2015. That's why they looked at 2013 and 14. We had two years' worth of full data. So you can see the climb there between the two years. I can tell you, in 2015, our total call volume was 6,300 calls. So you can see where that would have moved the line. It was about a 17% increase in call volume. This year, we're tracking to meet about the same as we had for 2015. You would think, we've grown a little bit, you would think the call volume would be more. Part of that maintenance is we're not going on some of the medical calls that we were going on in the past three years. As we transitioned into a new CAD system, we identified some call types that did not need to send multiple units and multiple resources to the calls. So that's why we're kind of maintaining, even though overall, our calls for service are probably going to be going up. So with our responses, again, one of the great findings of the trip that we went on in Washington was to see how departments are using outcomes to talk about the services they provide and looking at their programs that they have and what are those outcomes that make sense, that you can track and then you can report on. So while these are not adopted, these are suggestions that we have within the department as we went through and looked at the master plan and in response to it. And these are very common key indicators or performance measures, if you will, or outcomes of two different types of responses. So on the fire responses, one of the goals of a fire department is to keep a fire contained to the room or area of origin. We're going to see a video and I'm going to ask for your consideration, it's about five minutes. But we talk about why that is very important to us. Now, we talk about either room of origin in a residential fire, or we talk about area of origin. You're going to see a picture of a fully involved trailer fire, where we want to keep that fire contained to that single unit and not let it spread to the units next to it. That'll become important as we continue the discussion. We do want to have zero fire-related deaths, both civilian and firefighters. We know that's not completely within our control. We had a death last year that she had come to smoke inhalation. But the goal of our organization of any fire department should be to have zero civilian or firefighter-related deaths. Also to maintain a 100% civilian rescue rate, meaning we still have time to get in the structure, find somebody that is down inside a structure and get them out. And the fire hasn't progressed enough that we simply cannot go inside. Then the other one is an economic impact outcome. And that is that we maintain a higher rate of dollars saved than dollars lost. As you can imagine, when somebody has a house fire and they are completely burned out of their home, it displaces the entire family. As a result of that, sometimes those folks need to take time off from work just to deal with the aftermath of that. That's a loss to the employer, it's a loss potentially to the person who lost the home. Structure fires in which we stopped the fire and we were able to get them back in business fairly quickly. There was a business in town here, and I won't say who it was, but it was six years ago, that the fire had spread enough that they were out of business for about five to six months. That had a very significant impact on them, had a very significant impact on their employees as well, who were out of work for six months. So we know that if we can get there quicker and change that discourse of dollars saved and dollars lost, we can have an economic impact on the community in a positive way. On the EMS and rescue response side, as far as outcomes, we want to maintain a 75% cardiac arrest save rate. You may ask, why not 100? The reality is, as a paramedic for 24 years, not all cardiac arrests are savable. That is the reality. Sometimes the heart just simply doesn't have enough activity that we can do anything with. However, we do want to maintain a 75% cardiac arrest save rate. What that means is they walk out of the hospital and they go on to have a productive life. There's a lot there, not just on the response side, but on the prevention side. So there's two pieces to that puzzle. In having good prevention, good messaging, early 911 notification, and then we have the tools and resources to get there quickly and turn that around. Extrication is another benchmark for us. We know when somebody's trapped in a vehicle, we need to get them out. Oftentimes, when somebody sustains that kind of damage in a vehicle, time becomes of the essence. They're injured to the point, we need to cut that car open and get them out. Our goal is to have that done within 15 minutes of the scene arrival. That may sound like a long time, but if you consider, it takes about two to three minutes to get all the equipment out, the generators going, the tools going, that leaves us about 12 minutes to finish that cut. As you can imagine, you've seen some of the pictures of those extrications of those cars, that's a pretty quick out. STEMI EKG, we've heard a lot from the American Heart Association about heart attacks and the importance of early notification. One of the things on the EMS side that we do that speeds up the recovery and the treatment of those folks is we have EKG capabilities. The new STEMI protocol, STEMI stands for ST elevation myocardial infarction, if you all wanted to know what the acronym was. The quicker we can get an EKG sent to the cardiologist at the cath lab in the hospital, the quicker we get that patient directly into the cath lab. It used to be that we would take heart attack patients, we'd take them to the ER, they'd do a bunch of research and studies and give a bunch of medications. It was about another 45 minutes before they got into a cath lab. A cath lab is the end benefit. You go in, you open up the arteries, you get blood flowing again. We have now got a process by which we bypass the ER when we can confirm an MI like this. Bypass the ER, they go right into the cath lab. That's a benefit to the community. And then lastly, critical trauma patients, we want to get them off the scene within 15 minutes. This is considered a golden hour when it comes to critical trauma. We are not the end all prevent, we're not the end. The treatment is in the OR for these folks. And so the quicker we can get them to the OR, much like we just talked about the cath lab, the quicker we can get them into the OR, the more chance they have for survivability. So getting these folks off the scene within 15 minutes, I can tell you, that's a short timeframe. A lot needs to be done when you have a critical trauma patient. There's IVs, there's fluids, there's medications, there's airways. That's a lot of work in a short amount of time, but that is a goal. So I talked about a video, and this is about five minutes, and what I want to talk about just a little bit is, on the response time, there's a lot of questions have been asked, what does it matter? Does it matter if we get there quickly? And I think this video does a really good job of explaining why it does matter. This was done by NIST, which is the National Institute, and I'm going to start this while I talk. National Institute of Standards and Technology. This is not a fire department-supported organization. They are an independent organization, and they did this in conjunction with Underwriters Laboratory. If you're familiar with safety science, you'll see a lot of UL stickers on a lot of the things we buy. UL is Underwriters Laboratory. So what they wanted to do is compare what's called legacy room contents and construction. And there's no other way I can put it, other than to say, this is the stuff that was in my grandmother's house. We're talking about wood furniture that was wood. It was thick, it was heavy, it's kind of like the old '66 Chevelle. It was big and heavy and lasted. So they took those legacy room contents and then looked at legacy construction. Construction back 30 years ago was bigger beam stuff. It was big wood. Today, in our modern furnishings, what you're going to see is what you will find in your home today. The type of furniture you have, the draperies you have. And then with our construction, if you look around as buildings are being constructed here in Meridian, you see a lot of 2x4 and 2x6 construction. We know that burns faster than thicker wood. So what they did is started a fire in both of these. I can tell you, the environment here is exactly the same. The temperature's the same, the airflow is the same. And so they started these two fires, and what you're going to see progress is on the left-hand side, again, they were started at the same time. On the right-hand side, you're starting to see that fire burn and you're starting to see that black smoke. If you compare that to what's on the left, you do not see that black smoke. What's on the right is a lot of plastics. And so we're seeing that burning. And what that's doing is causing a whole lot of toxic smoke. As this fire progresses, you're going to see from the top, black smoke start to work its way down. Obviously, on the left, you see that fire still burning, it's barely a fire. So as that black smoke comes down, and keep in mind, the front of these two buildings for this scientific demonstration, those are very open. So you're seeing that smoke escape because of the way they set this up. Imagine that that's a doorway and it's keeping that smoke contained within that room. Granted, this is a small room, but it is a pretty good example of what occurs. As that black smoke starts to fall, and we're going to see it here in a little bit where it's going to get real thick, at that point, the temperature of that smoke is 1,000 degrees or greater. You can see on the left-hand side, that room is still very livable. In fact, it's probably livable enough that somebody could grab their water hose and put it out. The picture on the right, we are past the point that a homeowner could put this out themselves. The hope is, we have got an early notification through smoke detectors, and by this time, the fire department has been notified. We're 2 minutes and 45 seconds into this. What you're going to see next, as this progresses, is that black smoke is going to get thicker and it's going to come down even more. You've probably heard me talk in the past, or if you've gone through Fire Ops 101, you've heard them talk about flashover. And what flashover is, you're going to see it and it's going to be very graphic, is the point in which all that gas up at the top of that room gets superheated enough that it ignites. It creates its own ignition mechanism. At that point of flashover, that room is not livable. In fact, in this current situation right here, if we're not out by now, we're very hot and it's probably not survivable. But you will see, there's the flashover. So the black smoke, that gas that was up in the ceiling got hot enough, it ignited on its own, and then it creates this massive fire. So when we talk about response, and why is it important that we get there quickly, this is one of the examples. Now, there's a second piece to this, and that is the prevention that we can do and the public outreach that we can do. So I'm providing a little bit of education here. If this were to occur in your home in a room, what we would hope that you would do is exit quickly but close the door behind you. The reason that this fire is burning so fast and so quickly is it has oxygen. It has a place to grab more fuel. By closing the door, you're going to keep that fire contained, hopefully within that room, to where we can get there, open the door, and extinguish it. We do know that every room has sheet rock, there's a fire rating on sheet rock. But when a fire is burning this hot, the sheet rock doesn't last very long. So we get through the sheet rock, our biggest concern with a fire like this is it's going to get through the ceiling, the sheet rock in the ceiling get up into the attic space. Once it gets in the attic space, imagine your trusses in your house, 2x4s all throughout it, that wood is going to burn quickly. So oftentimes, when we get there, you'll see us poking holes in the ceiling of those rooms that have burned to make sure that fire is not extended up into the attic space. So there you can see, this just goes on a little bit. We were at flashover at 3 minutes and 40 seconds in this room. It usually takes, in the best circumstance, about two minutes for a homeowner to recognize they have a fire and to notify us and get out. So now we're already two minutes behind the eight ball, so you can see how quickly this fire can spread without an early notification, early response. In my grandmother's home, in her room, you can see we're now at 28 minutes and we still haven't achieved flashover in that legacy furnishings. So the message here is, building construction has changed and the contents within our homes has changed significantly over the last 30 years. And that does affect how quickly we need to get there. So this was from the master plan. The video wasn't, obviously, you don't have a video within your master plan there. But when we talk about those fires, what does it take? How many people does it take to effectively mitigate a problem? And so this is what's known as effective response force in the fire service world. How many folks does it take for each call type that you go on? This is a graphic, and I'll start on the right. Low-risk call types. We're talking about a very simple EMS call. We're talking about an isolated dumpster fire. We're talking about an isolated car fire in which we may need to have one or two units there to mitigate the problem. there to mitigate the problem. That's a pretty low risk and we can manage that with fewer resources, obviously. The moderate risk is what your typical structure fire is today, given no extreme situations as far as weather goes. So if it's not 105 degrees out, or it's not 20 degrees out, it need to be done to moderate the risk, or to, to minimize the risk, that would be a moderate risk category. This is standard to what we do today throughout the valley. A typical structure fire response on the initial alarm is three engines, a truck and a battalion chief. That's consistent with every department in the valley today. Uh, now you add extreme weather to that, one way or the other, you add wind. I noticed it was windy this evening when we came in. You add wind to that, or you add multiple exposures next to the structure on fire, we're going to bump that up and have more resources on scene. It just takes more people to pull hose lines, protect the structures, et cetera. The maximum risk is one that quite honestly, we hope we never see, but we know we, it happens. The maximum risk here, the last one I can find, uh, in Meridian, we did have the Washington Street apartment fire that did take a lot of resources to put out, but that was still not even a maximum risk. Last one we had here was the Meridian High School fire, and many of you were here and remember that very well. Uh, but we've seen more recent examples of that throughout the valley. We had the Middleton High School fire that, that took half the, the high school out. We had the Oregon Trail fire in Boise, in which you had 37 to 39 resources there. Uh, and most, most recently in Nampa, we had the, the old Mercy Hospital fire. That was a big, uh, maximum risk, um, because of the number of people it takes to put those fires out. So with that, we take a look, and NESCI does this, uh, they compare firefighters per thousand, that's a benchmark they use to meet those effective response forces and the, and the folks it takes to, to do that job. When they look at this, they look at it within a population band. So our population band that they compared us against, you can see there at the bottom was 50,000 to 99,000, 99,0099. It's a tongue twister for me. And so they compare, how do you, how do you look regionally? Region means the west, the 12 western states. Obviously national is just a, an entire look nationally. Uh, so we're at about .67 firefighters per thousand. I know it's hard to compare us against any other, uh, department in the west because we start talking about where we live and, and value and all that. A comparison locally, Caldwell is at .69, uh, Nampa is at a .72, and Idaho Falls is at a 1.9, to give you an idea of where we are. Where this matters most to me is do we have enough folks on duty to do the job? Um, I don't, I don't know about comparing ourselves to others. I, I look at what we do and do we have enough folks to do the job? So I think that you need to take this with a grain of salt. Uh, I know I do. So then looking at, at our incidences, historically, again, this took that 2013 to 2014 data, two years' worth of data and said, where are your incidences happening today? It was a look at current evaluations. As you can see, right there in the middle, Cherry Lane and, and Meridian, uh, is where our biggest concentration of calls are. Ironically, that is the hardest place, believe it or not, for us to get to in five minutes, even from the four stations that surround it. Because of road speeds and traffic, that one is difficult for us. Uh, you can see we have some other hotspots, uh, over around St. Luke's. We have quite a few calls that occur in that St. Luke's area. And then also at Eagle and Fairview, uh, and we're seeing those calls on the rise. I know, uh, law enforcement is seeing the same thing, but we're seeing, seeing a lot of increased activity and call volume in 2015 at that Eagle and Fairview area. So we know where our hotspots are. Uh, the rest of it, as far as the, the yellow, that 31 to 300 incidents within the, the two-year study period is just a reflection of more residential. Uh, you can see where our heaviest call volumes are, where you might have more commercial So response time recommendation, one of the things that we talked about early on when, when we, uh, got the approval to move forward with this master plan, was to look at adopting and developing a response time standard. Uh, this is something that's been discussed, I know, by my predecessor and then by me over the last seven years, is trying to come up with some recommendation that we could compare our data to and have an expectation so the community knows what to expect. This picture, I want to bring you back to it, and we talk about how many folks it takes to do the job. I was actually on this fire, if you don't recognize it, this is a, uh, trailer park right directly behind Idaho Pizza. I believe it was third, I'd have to look at that again. Uh, so a fully involved trailer. These burn quickly. Um, the problem with trailers like this is that they have a lot of windows, they're very compact space, so as soon as those windows break, we feed the fire. Uh, so they are very difficult to get to and put out and keep them, that damage minimized. The challenge with this fire, number one, it was 98 degrees out that day. Number two, you can see the exposures both to the left and the right. That's a concern for us, that requires more resources to get on scene and look to mitigate that problem. You can see that the fire's already spread, it's gotten into that pickup truck on the left-hand side, we had a tree on fire on the backside of this structure, and then we had the two trailers next to it that were receiving a lot of heat and starting to receive damage. So this was a, one of those calls where we requested additional resources to help mitigate those things on the left and right of this, of this, uh, fire. So when we talk about response time and travel time, what makes that up and what are the, what are the conflicts, what are the challenges with that? The two things we focus on when we talk about travel time and trying to establish a travel time standard, one is geography. Are our stations located such that they can achieve whatever travel time we set? We don't drive 100 miles an hour, contrary to popular belief, law enforcement maybe, we don't. So we have a speed limit requirement, we have a driving requirement, and so when it comes to geography, are we stationed well enough that we can respond to mitigate the issue? I will tell you the NFPA recommendation, NFPA is the National Fire Protection Agency. They come out with standards in the fire service and recommendations. Their recommendation is four minutes of travel. They do that for two reasons. One is flashover, where they're trying to recommend that you get there before flashover occurs. And then on the EMS side, we know after six minutes of a cardiac arrest with no activity at all, brain death occurs. And so that's where the, the standard came from, that's the history behind the standard. And then we talk about reliability. Reliability is, is the call volume maintained well enough to allow the unit within that sub-district? So I'll take Station 1 as an example, they have a boundary. Is their call volume maintained well enough that they can actually respond to a call in their district? Or is a call volume high enough in that district that they're not available to respond to the call that occurs? Typically, that requires a little bit of overlap coverage to maintain that. Ideally, departments should strive for an 85% reliability factor, meaning 85% of the time, the unit in that sub-district is available to handle the call within that district. Currently, right now, our stations two through five are running anywhere from 82 to 86%. We do have a problem with Station 1, it's at 72%. We'll talk a little bit about that later. So then to cap, uh, recap total response time, we focused on travel time there in those last two. To focus on total response time, there's three components to a total response time. One is the call processing time, meaning the time from when the phone rings to the time a button's pushed to notify us. That's currently done through the 80 County Dispatch Center. We don't have a lot of control over how long it takes, other than to continue to meet and we have, and I will tell you Sheriff Bartlett has been very receptive to the conversation. I will give him a lot of credit. Uh, he's doing a great job. But we have had call processing times up to three, four, and five minutes before we get notified. It's too long. Uh, we'll see what that, what that standard should be. Turnout time is from the time the station is alerted, that we have a call, till the time we roll the wheels out the bay and, and start heading out to that call. And then travel time is simply the time it takes from point A to point B. And there's some challenges with that that we've discussed in the past, such as traffic, weather, et cetera. So the recommendation within the master plan, and this is getting to the heart of a recommendation, is a call processing time, and this is the national standard through NFPA 1221, should be 60 seconds or less 90% of the time. That's moving. But, uh, part of the challenge we have right now is the, the call taker is taking the call, they get the nature of the emergency and the address, but they're still answering a whole lot of questions. We're trying to propose, as soon as you get the address and the nature of the call, push the button and, and let us know. And we can start that process to get in route. You can follow up with all your follow-up questions that you need to ask to get us more information. As ESCI looked at that, they could not analyze what our current call processing time is from the dispatch center. There wasn't enough data provided from them for ESCI to be able to analyze what that is. That's a challenge, and I've talked to Sheriff Bartlett about that. We've done some local analysis, Boise Fire's done a lot of analysis on this. We do know that they're over. We have indications, there's, there's been three, four, and five-minute call processing times. The one thing I will just mention here, and it's worth mentioning, is that throughout the valley, we're actually looking at a process that's called station alerting. Station alerting is a system that's tied to the dispatch center as soon as, much like I, I alluded to earlier, as soon as we get the address and the nature of the call, it will send out a signal to the station, it will notify the station, even though the call taker is still getting the information, you actually get an automated voice, it's a real human voice recorded, and it'll say, "Engine 31, uh, car fire, Meridian City Hall." Uh, and at that time, the call taker is still taking additional information, but that gets us started. Spokane Fire Department has been using this for about five years. They have shaved about 90 seconds off their call processing time by implementing this solution. Uh, we feel it's a very viable solution. I believe the dispatch center is opening the conversation about that, and so we will certainly keep you updated as we move forward in, in looking into that. The turnout time, the standard, is what we want to abide by. 60 seconds or left, less for EMS calls, 90 seconds or less for fire-related calls. Both of those are done 90% of the time. As ESCI analyzed our data, uh, we were at 99 seconds at the 90th percentile, meaning 90% of the time, we're doing this in 99 seconds or less. So by far, out of the four agencies that participated in this, we were well above everybody else. So our guys do a good job, once they get notified, of getting moving. Challenge I'll make to you, and this will be an honest, uh, engine moment, if, and you can try this if you like, uh, I don't say you have to, but try it if you like. Set your alarm clock for three o'clock in the morning, have it go off, get dressed, get your boots on, get out in your car and back it out of the garage and see if you can do it in 60 seconds. If you do it, I'll buy you lunch. Uh, it is challenging, and I, I'll trust you, uh, if you do it. The recommended travel time obje-, uh, that's built within the plan itself, I go back to the NFPA standard or, or, or recommendation of four minutes. The challenge with that four-minute standard is that I have not found a fire department anywhere in the US, including the chief of the department that was the chairman of NFPA 1710 that established that four minutes. It is costly to do, and it takes a ton of resources to do. And so the departments that I've talked to around the country, nobody is doing the four-minute standard because it's simply not achievable. Uh, so as we looked, we said, well, what does make sense? What is affordable? What still gets us there in a, in a quick timeframe? So we started discussing the idea of looking at travel time objectives based on population density. So the population densities that you see here, urban and metro densities are greater than 2,001 people per square mile. Suburban densities are anywhere from 1,001 to 2,000 people per square mile. Rural densities are 51 people to 1,000 people per square mile. And our frontier densities are zero to 50 people per square mile. It's not livestock, that's, uh, that's actually people per square mile. This, this graphic and this population density, uh, concept follows the fire service accreditation model as well, as far as densities go and how you respond to those. I did have the opportunity to sit down with Bruce Chatterton and had him review what we were proposing, uh, as far as a travel time based on population density, and, and I can tell you, Bruce said there's a lot of merit in what we're looking at. What it allows you to do, and, and it, it just, by its very nature, you can see where this is going, the more densely populated an area, the quicker the response time expectation is. I think that's the standard community expectation. From a planning perspective, it helps us to understand as we grow, when do those response time expectations change? It becomes far less subjective and actually puts some objectivity to it. Uh, and so the recommendation is, for our urban metro densities, it's a five-minute travel time, 90% of the time. In our suburban densities, it's a seven-minute travel time, 90% of the time. In our rural densities, 59 minutes, 90% of the time. And in the frontier densities, which we don't have any of, uh, is 15 minutes, 90% of the time. I can tell you this, uh, this is a travel time objective that the other three agencies involved in this have adopted, as well as Nampa is looking at this, as well as a, as an adoption possibility, uh, for their, for their service. So how does that look? This look right here represents that four-minute travel time. You can see where we cannot get if we were to adopt a four-minute travel time. ISRB, if you see in the upper left-hand corner, ISRB is the Idaho Survey and Rating Bureau. It's Idaho's version of ISO. Uh, the insurance companies use that as they, as they look at homeowners' endpoint, a planning standpoint, it's very difficult to achieve if you were to want to do this model. So looking at the model we're proposing, this would be the urban and metro. I think if you attended the, uh, presentation by ESI during the discussion, you saw the maps up on the wall. I certainly have those still, and I'm more than happy to sit down with you and go over those. This is what can be achieved, readings over in the, in the right-hand corner, within a five-minute travel. This does assume that every unit is in their quarters when the, when the call comes out. We talked about reliability a little bit. This graphic done through a GIS system extends out a little bit to cover more of our, our southwest region, also the northwest region. And then a nine-minute travel time covers pretty much our entire response area, and obviously 15 minutes is going to cover it all. There's another visual map just showing the different layers, the five minutes, the seven minutes, the nine minutes, and the 15 minutes. So what can we do today if we adopt these standards? Uh, again, this was a regional look, but it does match what we can do here in Meridian. Uh, under that metro-urban classification and the five-minute travel, we can do that 85%. We can cover 85% of what we need to in that five-minute travel with those densities. In the suburban, we can cover 90% of that. So we would meet that 90 percentile benchmark that we would be shooting for. The rural's a lot more difficult, and again, we don't have a lot of rural. Typically, what we see in our rural map, if we look at a map and put those population densities in, there's a lot of farm ground, even within the city of Meridian, that simply hasn't developed. And so you have nobody living there because it's still a large chunk of farm ground. That's a lot of our rural. We still have quite a bit of rural in our southwest and a little bit to our northwest as well. Uh, the frontier, again, we don't have any, uh, but those departments that do, very difficult to achieve even in 15 minutes, but, uh, that would be the goal. So when we talk about reliability, and this is a concern to us, as we, we've looked historically at what we're doing, uh, and that's call volume, uh, in conjunction with the stations that we have. And so if you look back in 2013, 81% of the time, we had just a single call going on in the district, in the coverage area. That has jumped down to 78.6%. You can see where the secondary calls and the third layer calls are increasing. So that reliability piece, as far as a travel time, um, adoption, does also take into account how reliable are you to be able to respond in that sub-district to meet that travel time expectation that, that is adopted? So this is something we will keep an eye on, uh, as we move forward. Certainly Station 6, when we build that, that's going to help with this reliability because a large portion of where Station 6 is going to go is currently being covered by two engines, either Station 1 or Station 4. Station 4 is the only engine company, only station we have south of the freeway, so when they go out on a call, the entire south Meridian is uncovered. And so Station 6 will help that and should change this graphic, uh, once that station is put in. Uh, this is simply a graphic, it was within your, the presentation, within the, the, the report, this just shows the coverage area that we have with our one truck company. The challenge with the truck company is that they respond throughout the entire coverage area of our district. Anytime there's a structure fire, we talked about the typical structure fire response, three, one, and one, three engines, one truck and a battalion chief, that truck is going throughout the entire district, not just within the geographical area that's shown here within the representation. So moving into the recommendations found within the plan, uh, there were specific, uh, Meridian Fire Management recommendations that, uh, that ESCI recommended. Uh, the first is to provide performance evaluations for all employees. We do that today. And so as I met with Don Vivens, who was our liaison to ESCI, this was simply put in as a reminder to continue doing that. And so as a reinforcement statement, uh, to continue doing, uh, in performance evaluations. The second was to establish a regular review process for department policies. Like many departments, we are good at producing policies. We're not as great at doing an annual review or a regular review of those policies to make sure they still make sense. So certainly the fire department does, uh, agree with this recommendation. The third is to conduct a critical task analysis for our common response times, uh, response types. You saw this when we did the effective response force analysis and looking at all those different call types and how many folks does it take on scene to mitigate an issue? As an example of that, we've done some of this, uh, critical task analysis already. We know on a very standard medical call, uh, an earache, a, a bellyache, it takes an engine company and an ambulance. Sometimes just an ambulance, sometimes just an engine company. We know on a cardiac arrest, where we're rotating crews on CPR every two minutes under the new standard, it takes more resources to do that than what we would have on a, on a simple medical call. So we, we agree with this recommendation, um, in going through all the different call types we have and conducting that critical task analysis. So it's very transparent, how many do we need on these different call types to mitigate the problem? Uh, the fourth is to develop and adopt a new strategic plan to guide the workforce. As you know, we, we did develop a strategic plan in 2011. Uh, we've completed that plan, we are due for a, a new one, um, quite honestly. And so in September, we are going on a retreat, it's a joint management labor retreat to talk about for the next 24 months, what are those things we want to focus on? We'll bring that conversation back to council to get your input as well. Where do you want to see us focus our efforts that we do have? Uh, I'm, I'm not going to call it a strategic plan, the city has a strategic plan. Uh, what we are going to be de- developing is a tactical plan for the next 24 months. Uh, so we do agree with that recommendation. Uh, develop a policy of services offered by the department, that has since been done. Uh, and so that was that first two slides that you saw, uh, that I shared with you. Uh, the next is provide a six-minute review, a QA of a featured policy at the beginning of every training session. I'd asked Lieutenant Overton, the company that came in and developed their department policies was Lexipol. Lexipol. The gentleman that owned Lexipol for a long time was Gordon Graham. If you've ever seen Gordon Graham speak, he's a, he's a former sheriff or city office, California somewhere. Yeah.
Captain with California Highway Patrol.
Captain. He went on to become an attorney, which, the law enforcement attorney, and then he went and furthered himself and became a risk manager. And so this is a big thing that Gordon Graham, if you ever listen to him speak, always says is that at the beginning of every training session, it takes six minutes to review a policy. So that was put in here as a recommendation. The Fire Department does agree with that recommendation. The next is enhance the Meridian Fire website, adding description of services provided. Quite honestly, I believe our website is very informative. We have added two components in the last year. One is an Ask the Chief button, and I know Casey Emery has been very excited about this. It's a, it's a button that the folks can push and ask me any question they like, and we're getting on average two or three a week where folks are engaging with us, asking questions. It could be something from, I've got a chirping smoke detector, how do I change the battery to a code question? It ranges all over the place, but we've gotten great feedback and great results from that Ask a Chief question. We've also added to our website a survey. So if we go out and, and serve a member of our community, they have access to a survey that they can go in and give us feedback. We have been receiving incredible feedback from that. We also send out surveys for responses we have. We send 60 out every month, and we have gotten great feedback on that. So it's a way for us to gauge, are we meeting the public's needs? So with that recommendation, we feel the, the website is pretty robust, and we're pretty proud of it and pretty happy with it. We're always looking to add to it if we need to, but with that recommendation, we're pretty, pretty happy with where we're at. The next is to examine the cross-staffing workload, response times, and unit reliability at Station 1. We did mention that earlier as we talked about reliability and the, the ability to meet travel time expectations. That is something that we're aware of and are looking into. So we do agree with that recommendation. Adopt a response time performance objectives. I, I agree with that one because it's been one of the things that I was hoping to get out of this master plan is to set those expectations of the council and the community. The next one, implement a community risk reduction program. For the last five years, we've been heavily engaged with our community on smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, and we've been very successful at that. That's an example of community risk. How can we reduce that risk to our community? We also provide a car seat inspection program in which we are trying to get in, help folks install their car seat properly so we're reducing the risk that potentially they could have in a, in a wreck. We know there's more to do. We have elderly fall education that we have always wanted to pursue. We have a lot of elderly folks that fall in their homes simply because their homes are not situated in a way to, to prevent that. That's an example of community risk. We do agree that, that we need to further explore ways that we can get out in our community and help reduce that risk. With the staffing recommendations, implement regular labor management meetings to improve two-way communication. Obviously, communication is always difficult in every department. Certainly, we, we have that challenge as well. One of the things that we've been challenged with, quite honestly, is when we moved out of the fire station, we're closer to our satellite locations, we created some space and some void between us. Nonetheless, we know we need to improve that. So three months ago, we started meeting monthly with the union leadership to talk about the issues that are facing them. That's been very productive. We have a retreat coming in September, a joint labor management retreat where we're going to talk about strategic initiatives and that, and that workflow moving for the next 24 months. So we are working to improve that communication. Communication is always a challenge. As I get older, I am less reliant on technology. Emails can only go so far, and as you know, when you, when you have satellite locations, you tend to get inundated with emails, and that's not always the best way to communicate. So we're our, we're also looking at doing quarterly all-hands meetings where folks can come in. We provide a state of the department address and talk about the things that we're doing currently. And so those are some of the ways we do agree with this recommendation. Development, implement a quality assurance program for all EMS responses with your approval, and I thank you for your support. As was presented in the budget this year, we have a shared cost position through the EMS Joint Powers Agreement in which we're sharing in the cost of a, of an EMS quality assurance individual. That's a state requirement, so we're going to be getting that accomplished through shared resources. So we thank you for your support. That one has been done. The next is implement a safety committee to review accidents. This is something we don't have today and certainly recognize and agree with the need for it. We've discussed this with our partners, they're in the same boat as well. And so we're hoping to work together to, to develop a safety committee. When any department does have an accident, there's a panel that will review that accident, look at what could have been done to prevent that accident, and then provide recommendations for change if we need to. So we are working on that currently. Consider creating a logistics position. We discussed that at this year's budget. I appreciate the mayor taking us to task and saying, work with your partners because nobody else has this and everybody needs it. And so how do we work together to get that accomplished? Additional staffing in the training division. At the time that ESI came in and did that, we did not have our budget process going yet. Certainly, I want to thank council for their support in the positions that we're getting in the FY '17 budget if all goes well and goes through to meet that need. Station 1 is a, is a redundant repeat. Consider staff if that is the case, if that is what's needed. And then the last one, implement ARVs, alternative response vehicles. You had that presentation from me 10, 11, 12 months ago. Do I still believe in the concept of ARVs? Yes, but I know that needs a lot more dialogue, a lot more conversation, a lot more research. So while we agree with the recommendation to look into it, we are certainly not here saying that is what we have to do. I think it, it requires some more dialogue. I think there's some benefit to it, but certainly that's something we can have dialogue in the future on. Training recommendations, develop and adopt comprehensive emergency driving training. It's typically known as EVOC, in Public Safety Emergency Vehicle Operations Course. We have not been doing this. We do the driver training through the city as far as the ICREM requirements. We do an engineer development program, which is a 12-week program for up-and-coming engineers that will be driving our apparatus, but we recognize that we do need to put on more comprehensive emergency drivers' training on an annual basis, something every department that I've talked to is struggling with, but we do agree with that recommendation. Continue efforts to provide a 14-week recruit academy. That is ongoing. We start a recruit academy September 6th with our, our planning partners, so we're sharing in the cost of that academy. So we're very excited about that, and we will certainly continue that. The burn room on the training grounds at Station 1, when that tower was built, it has a very nice burn room in it. The challenge that we didn't know back then is that those tiles go bad quickly. And so in order for us to continue to burn in there, we need to make sure those tiles are replaced on a regular basis. We've since implemented a plan, and we actually had a plan two years ago that we've been working on to get those tiles continually replaced so that we can still burn in that burn room in a safe manner. And then continue examination, budgeting efforts for a two-story burn house and confined space prop. This is a very long-term goal. This is part of the build-out of Scenario Village over at the training center. As that builds out, that's something that we're going to look at and potentially propose if it makes sense. So then the, the regional strategies that you'll find within the report, you see the list there. I will tell you, ESI is very jaded, if I can say that in the right way, on separating out your dispatch center to a specific fire and EMS-only dispatch center. I don't know that I agree with that recommendation. I've talked to Sheriff Bartlett about this. I do believe we can improve the dispatch center, but I feel that working with the sheriff is a better route to go than separating out. I know Meridian has some experience on creating its own dispatch center. We don't want to do that. So I've, I've talked with Sheriff Bartlett quite a bit, as well as Chief Malott has talked to Sheriff Bartlett. In September, there's going to be a group put together of elected officials, fire chiefs, and the sheriffs to talk about the issues that fire is facing. We have some pretty, pretty glaring examples of significantly delays, significant delays in getting notified. We were requested to NAPA about three weeks ago, I was talking to Chief Malott, San Antonio, took 21 minutes to get us notified when they needed help. So those are things that we know can happen and can occur, and the sheriff's aware of those. So we don't necessarily agree with a fire and EMS-specific dispatch center. We agree with working with the sheriffs on that. Implement a regional records management system. One of the things that's being pushed in the fires service is how do we share our data and share our information to look at, are we seeing trends in fires? Are we seeing trends in EMS calls, community risk? I can tell you, this one is moving forward. Our RMS, as it's commonly known, Records Management System, is where we input all our run reports. We've been using Firehouse for years. IT was about ready to throw it out the window. I was throwing it out the window. Regionally, we have gone to a product called ESO, so truly, we are going to be under one records management system that will allow that sharing of information and data and collaboration. Implement peak activity units. Again, this is not a recommendation that I feel is, is appropriate for Meridian, certainly now. If we get to the point where we're running 15,000 to 20,000 calls a year, that is probably a discussion point. Peak activity units are very common in the private sector. You'll see them if you go into Oregon, you'll see the Department of Transportation vehicles parked on the side of the road. That's because their data shows every morning at 7:00, we have an accident right here. I can tell you, we see that a little bit in the valley. In NAPA at Franklin, every morning, there's typically an accident or a fender bender. We see it at Meridian Road as people are trying to merge. We can track that data. Peak activity units are meant to say, put the unit where the call is anticipated to occur. But again, that's really in a system where you're running 15,000 or more calls, and you're trying to add supplemental staff to meet the demand. So as far as a recommendation goes, they, they put that in every plan, I can tell you that. I've seen it before. It's not something I feel is appropriate to look at now. And then explore regional cooperation opportunities, the peak activity units we mentioned. The jointly staffed truck companies is a big thing in the fire service now. As I, as I went back to San Antonio, met with fire chiefs across the country, there's a lot of this occurring because, quite honestly, truck companies are expensive to staff and buy. And then joint purchasing. As far as functional consolidations go, looking at logistics, what we, we're talking about that already, apparatus maintenance, mobile repairs, things that we can do together to help contain costs somewhat and just create better effectiveness by working together. The last two are certainly ones of much longer discussion and a lot more research and information needed to even consider the last two. So that's what regional cooperation looks like. I would add NAPA into this mix. We still have cooperation with agencies outside of these five, but not to the level that we have with these, with these other four, I should say. So that's what, that's a map that it looks like when you talk about regional cooperation. So we do want to give one example of, of what ESI wanted to highlight, and that example of regional efficiency and effectiveness. Star Station 2, which is down on Highway 44, that was built by a previous fire chief. It was never staffed. It's a big station, and it's, it's a pretty nice station, but it was never staffed. It sat dormant, it sat empty. So there was a lot of cost into that for nothing. When the new chief came in, Chief Craig Tominski, he looked at that and said, what can we do here? I can tell you a little bit of background on our, our vehicle maintenance and repair. When I first came in, we were sending our engines all over the place, and quite honestly, the service we were getting was terrible. I kept asking our providers for reports, even to tell me, what's our tire depth? Things as simple as that, and we couldn't get that out of them. So we made the decision about a year into my tenure as a fire chief, we, we contracted with Hughes Fire Department. Hughes is who we order our fire engines from. They had a service technician at the time. He is a certified emergency vehicle technician, so he knows how to work on fire apparatus there, pretty specific. The challenge we had there at the time is that Hughes was mobile, so it was actually done through a pickup and a trailer. The gentleman ironically lives in Meridian, he always has, but he was traveling to Montana, he was traveling to Idaho Falls, he was traveling all over the place. So our service was when he was here. With the, with the vacancy at, at Star Station 2, between the chief and their commissioners, they said, why couldn't we put on a, a maintenance division and take care of our fleet and take care of those around us to give them better cost? And so they did that. They ironically hired the guy from Hughes that lives in Meridian. And so he is now the mechanic for seven agencies here in the valley down at Star Station 2. We are getting better service, better cost, and so the result has been very positive. And, and ESI felt that was a highlight of how you can look at things regionally and achieve something good. And so it was worth mentioning. Just about ready to lose my voice. Good timing. So with that, again, this was an information presentation. What I'd like to do is come back to you within 30 days after you've had time to digest it, certainly reach out to me and ask questions, and hopefully adopt this plan. With the adoption, I want to be careful there. What I'm looking for is the adoption to say, we want you, chief, to pursue these things knowing that it still has a fiscal impact that needs to be presented to you. It still needs to be judged based on that recommendation and knowing there's still dialogue that occurs, even though you say, we adopt the plan, that is your green light to pursue those things. Maybe we find that we, we don't want to pursue them, maybe we find that we do, but it would then hold us accountable to provide you updates on what we are achieving. So with that, I would stand for any questions I would ask. Thank you for your, your attention.
Thank you, chief. Council, any questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
If you want to, if you want to be here until about 12 o'clock, I can start. I, to be blunt, this reminds me of about a 2000 plan that was brought by North Ada. If you look back and go through the things, I think you will find there's a reason that the four big players are not involved, Boise, NAPA, Kuna, and Eagle. I think you'll also look, if you look through the ones that are involved, and with the exception of Meridian, they've had their problems or are having their problems. To me, it looks like a way that, that our citizens get to finance stuff. I do have a bunch here to, to be fair to everybody, and Mark and I have discussed most of this and agreed to disagree. I, I will get this typed out in a, in a form and get it to you and all the council people to look it over and stuff. I, I mean, I, I've got pages of it, that, that questions that I had and, and questions that, and I'll get it to you, Mark. So I, I just, if, you know, if we're looking, if we're looking at saving money by buying equipment together and stuff, we can do like the police do. We can have a state bid. We don't have to be a member of a management team. We have mutual aid agreements with everybody, and I, I, I have always encouraged that while we've had, while we've been doing most of the aiding, that's great. We've, and you can't, you know, when you start comparing us to NAPA and Caldwell with the staff and everything, you got to realize, NAPA and Caldwell have had fire departments since the early 1900s, and their buildings and stuff are old. 20 years from now, you know, we were 9,000 people when we hired our second full-time firearm, and he wasn't even a firefighter, it was a chief. So we don't have, and I, and, and you and I have discussed this more than, we don't have the fires that the older places have because our buildings are, you know, most of our commercial have, are sprinkled, which is a great thing. So I, I think that the metrics that I set, and I've done, I've had this with the same thing with the police all the years I've been on here. The metric I set is, am I satisfying the taxpayers of Meridian, Idaho? I could care less whether New York City or whoever, whatever, I could care less about them. Are we taking care of our citizens for the dollar they're getting? And you know what I think? I think we are. I'll get this out to you, mayor, to everybody, because I don't want to sit here.
Me neither. Any, any other comments? Chief, I, I would like to thank you for that, that summary. I, I think it was really good, and I, I believe that Councilman Byrd did bring something up, and, and it was acknowledged in this report. Meridian does have the, the fortune of having newer construction, and much of our community is built to newer fire codes, and that's reflective in our numbers. Fires per thousand, we were at 1.9 versus Caldwell at 5.5, or the regional average at 2.4. Our fire losses is impressive, and I think that's a testament to our, our staff and the, the training and the preparedness that our fire loss per capita is $10 versus the regional average of 34, and, you know, compared to Caldwell at 38 or Star at 73. I, I believe our citizens can take comfort in, if they do have a fire, hopefully, we don't have the scenario on the right or more on the left. And the incidents per thousand were around 56, and the original average is 83.4 versus Caldwell at 86.8. But at some point, we're going to, as we continue to age our inventory, those things are going to start to, to balance out perhaps, and we need to be prepared. I like your summary, and I would love to have that summary as part of this document. They did an executive summary, and it was, it was to the, the whole plan. They do divide it into different sections that you have brought into your PowerPoint, but I do think that you need to look at this as the chief and say, what are those things you're agreeing with? If you want this council to adopt this, I think it's important to, to say you don't agree with all of it.
Sure.
And what you do agree with, at least in having the conversations and those kind of things. And it might even address what some of Mr. Byrd's concerns might be. You might have the same concerns. So I, I appreciated the overview. That was very thorough. I found it extremely more important and more helpful than the summary I went to by our consultants.
Agreed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Mark, I got a couple of requests. Could I get your fire department policies?
You can.
A, a copy of it, and I'll, I'll get it distributed in my deal. And I've asked for this since 1998, and I never have been able to get it. I would like to know how many calls are responded to from our stations? Because that, that station alert thing don't work if they're not in the station.
Councilman Byrd, I appreciate the question. We've, we've had the conversation.
And I know, I know your, your hands are tied on some of that.
Yeah, the, the data points to obtain that information.
You can pull out the magic rabbit.
I will do my best.
I'd appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions or comments at this point? I know the, the chief did mention that he would be coming back and would like to get your feedback on, on what you have.
Madam Mayor.
Borden.
Briefly, chief, I thank you as well for the summary and for the work on this and the efforts of collaboration. And you and I have talked about this area that is of particular interest to me. It's the establishment of some objective measures for those response times.
Yes.
And I would be interested at perhaps the next council meeting to hear the council's respective ideas on that with the proposal and the tiered concept for response times. That's really helpful, I think, for this long-term planning as to station locations, how and if an ARV concept could ever be rolled out. We need to have some ability to consistently measure and plan for those. And I think a response time metric like that allows us to do it. Whether it's those numbers or not, I would love to hear that discussion.
And Councilman Borden, thank you for your comments. To your point, establishing response time standards is a local jurisdiction issue.
Right.
It really is. And so what was presented to you, if you have other ideas or thoughts or what you would like to see, certainly I'm hoping you'll reach out to me. We can have those conversations and then bring that back to another conversation at council.
Okay.
I do know that our police department had a number of comments, and Lieutenant Overton, I guess I would ask you for what those were.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm not aware of comments that they've had to this plan, but I do want to thank the fire chief for talking so nicely about our assistance to the fire department as we try to make their situation safe upon their arrival. And we would like to keep the guns and you keep the hoses.
Thank you.
Apparently Lieutenant Overton didn't want to do it on the record, but perhaps you can have a side conversation.
We look forward to it.
I do know this might be one of the few last remaining city council meetings that you attend, and definitely wanted you to have an opportunity for a last word.
Madam Mayor, if I might, you open the door. I will tell you, I did have Lieutenant Overton prior to council starting look at me and say, "I've always wanted to be a firefighter." The comment was made. J.C. Holman was a witness, so just saying.
This is better than donuts.
We do, yes.
Anything further from council?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Need to find my agenda, sorry. I will turn this over to Mr. Neri for his legal department report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a fairly tough act to follow. I'll try to keep it to less than an hour from the chief's presentation. There was a law change in July. The state legislature changed the liquor catering permit law. We have previously followed the state law, which basically sets a limit on the amount and basically requires that it be processed through the licensing agent and that it be approved by the police. And these are for everything from weddings that are serving liquor with a licensed liquor distributor, as well as special events like Rock the Village and other types of activities like that, or events in the park. So they all have to have liquor catering permits. So the change was threefold. First, they allow it now, it used to be a three-day limit. Boise proposed a five-day limit because they have extended concerts or extended events that go beyond three days. And the problem had been that they usually have to had two different vendors who had two different methods of operation, and sometimes that could be problematic. So they now allow it up to five days. We don't have any events like that at the present, but that may happen in the future. Second, they require now that we put every liquor catering permit that we approve has to be uploaded to the Idaho State Police website. So the Idaho State Police is aware, since they are the main control and enforcement of the Idaho liquor laws, that they're aware of where these activities are occurring. Third, they added the fire marshal into the process so that the fire marshal has to approve the location and the layout and how it's going to be done. So what we are proposing is that we create an ordinance so the people understand there is an actual process they need to follow so that we can make sure it gets properly filed with the state police, is properly reviewed by fire and police before it's issued. And the only real change that we're proposing, besides just having an ordinance in place, which we don't currently, is that we have a deadline for submission. And in discussing it internally, we came up with three days as three business days prior to the event so we have enough time to process, make sure we get the appropriate approvals. We looked at other cities in the area, city of Boise. Some have no regulations at all. City of Boise has a five-day requirement. City of Blackfoot, Coeur d'Alene, and McCall have three-day requirements. City of Star has a 10-day requirement, and the cities of Emmett, Haley, and Horseshoe Bend have 14-day requirements. Again, as we discussed, it, three days, three business days prior to the event gives us at least a little bit of time to do that because we have had people literally coming at 3:00 on a Friday afternoon to get a liquor catering permit, and we are running around trying to get somebody to sign off on it. There was more potential for error when that happens. And so that's why we're suggesting a three-day limit. And again, the process is all the rest of what the state statute requires so that Chief Palmer can review it from the fire marshal's side, Lieutenant Coliani reviews these for the police, and that basically the clerk is the funnel point for all of that and then issues the actual permit to the event. Do you have any questions about that or concerns on the time limit issue?
Mr. Borden.
Real quick, do you run this, have you run this past area caterers and restaurants, some of the folks that might be utilizing this?
We haven't. We were introducing it to you first. So we had planned on bringing it back whenever you would like, and if that's the direction you'd like, we can take it to people. Like, we don't have a lot of events centers. The Village is probably our largest. I don't know, I'll check with Lieutenant Coliani in the clerk's office if we get much for some of the hotels. Then we can run it by them and see if they have any issues or concerns before we bring it back. Like I said, the three days, you know, it's one of those things, if people are really organized, three days is more than enough time to get it done, but they're not always very organized. And so that's part of the problem. We don't get, we've seen an uptick in the numbers in looking through, they did 85 of these in 2012, 144 last year, 157 this year so far. And again, many of them are very simple. They're weddings and things like that, but they have to have liquor, and it's not in somebody's house, so they have to have a liquor catering permit. So they can be very simple to do. But again, if they're not very astute in doing these types of things, that's usually where the problem occurs.
Mr. Kavner.
Pulling a trick on me? Very funny. Madam Mayor, in a previous employment capacity, I did a significant amount of these throughout the city of Boise, and I think the five-day was always sometimes a challenge in that you would decide the weekend before you would like to serve alcohol the following weekend, and five days was somewhat difficult to swing. To Mr. Neri's point, I think any organization that's organized, a three-day notice seems to be sufficient. I think it would meet the needs of organizations that plan these types of events, as well as our regular citizens that want to serve these types of products at their own personal max. I think three days is great.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments?
All right, we will contact some of our venues first and then report back with that before we bring an ordinance for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9C is under our CDBG. Oh, there's Sean. I saw you out in the audience.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Hopefully this won't be too long. So what we're looking at is a substantial amendment to the action plan for this current year. And since we have two new council members that haven't been through a substantial amendment process, I just kind of wanted to go over what that meant and procedurally what that is and what we're tied to, just a little bit before we talk about the actual substantial amendment. So a substantial amendment to an action plan, again, it's procedural, it's tied to our consolidated plan, our five-year consolidated plan. And what it dictates is, when we change a project so much, and in this case, it's a 25% increase or decrease, in this case, it's a decrease and a little bit of an increase to another, or a complete change in priorities, we're forced to do a substantial amendment. It triggers our citizen participation plan from our consolidated plan, which means a 31-day public comment period. So in another 30 days or so, I'll come back before council and ask you for, I'll recommend something tonight and ask council to approve that with a public hearing. Another note there, too, we like to think that when we program things into an action plan, that there's a pretty good idea that they're going to expend, that project's going to move forward. The reality is, and we know the reality is, that's not always the case. Even with that expectation, some projects look very well, very well organized, ready to go forward, and something can happen. In this particular case, it's kind of unfortunate, it's a small dollar amount, because on a larger project, 25% wouldn't even trigger. But because we're talking about public service dollars, we have a 15% public service dollar cap in any given year. And so since this is two public service, or one public service that's not able to move forward in the way that they wanted to, it's a smaller dollar amount. But the idea here is to reallocate that to another public service in the same year that that public service was already approved, so that we're still meeting that need for, underneath that 15% cap. So in this case, Catch is charitable assistance to the communities homeless. We've tried to work with them for the last two years, and speaking with their executive director again this year, because of some things that are, there are barriers to them being able to carry out their plan, which is rapid rehousing of homeless, it's just very difficult for them to execute the way that they do in Napa and Boise here in Meridian. And a lot of that's just because of services. It becomes very easy to validate someone's immediate homelessness when you have a shelter to pull them out of. And so we've tried to lessen some restrictions over the last year. Catch thought that they could do it again this year and really use those dollars wisely, case management for these individuals. Unfortunately, they're just not able to do that at this time, not in Meridian. And I'm willing to take questions on those, too. So what we do have is Meridian Food Bank, who's ready and willing to absorb that cost. As of right now, just so that you're aware, and we don't have end-of-the-year numbers yet, 44,000 individuals have been served by the Meridian Food Bank, and our allocation to them right now is about 31,200. So this would be taking money from Catch, who knows that this is happening, giving it to Meridian Food Bank, who's ready and willing to spend that, to spend those funds to continue to serve within that 15%. So staff's recommendation is just what I just described, which is to take those $10,000 within public service funds, move them from Catch. This would leave Catch with some funds because they have actually still been working in Meridian, just not to the extent that they really hoped that they could in this last year. But that $10,000...
Sean, excuse me. I think Dean gets a lot of feedback from the conversations on the side. If we could limit those. Sorry, Sean.
It's okay, Madam Mayor. It's totally fine. That's my recommendation, to move the $10,000 from Catch to the Meridian Food Bank. It's within the 15% public service cap. Both organizations are well aware of what would happen if this were the case. Both acknowledge that this is something that they'd like to be able to do. What would follow from this? I would come back to council on 27th. We would ask for a public hearing, and I'd ask council to actually author that particular. The reason why this is important to get done before the end of the year, September 30th, other projects that are capital projects or public improvement projects, we can use those monies very easily in other years. We can use 2013 money in a 2016 project if it's still there. Public service dollars and admin dollars, those get very messy when you try to start bleeding the years. So if we can capture it in one year, that's probably, that's the best. That would be my recommendation. Madam Mayor, I stand for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Sean, explain to me on the Catch thing, the roadblocks that HUD has put up there, it's, we don't have a homeless shelter to pick out of? Is that what I understand? Or what about, I mean, Napa and Boise's got homeless shelters, and I'm sure some of the people are Meridian people.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Byrd, that's absolutely true. It's not that we don't have one. It's HUD's definition of homelessness for the immediate, the ability to immediately identify someone as needing rapid rehousing is the absolute most, most absolute definition of homelessness which you could apply from HUD, which is someone is not, they're not living in a habitat suitable for human habitation. And so anything else which is not exactly that does not meet that definition. Yes, you're absolutely right. We can look at Boise Rescue Mission or some of these other shelters, or look at Napa shelters, but then you're also looking for third party to validate that they came out of Meridian. And when we started this two years ago with Catch, that was something that city put, it was a restriction that we put on them internally, self-inflicted, if you will, that they would verify that they came out of Meridian in the best way they could, which was very difficult. We tried to loosen that restriction, just to say, "Listen, if we can possibly get that." That's not a HUD restriction, that was our restriction. And we removed that, and it's still very difficult to rehouse those individuals in Meridian.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
My mic on. Okay, I'll ask you the question I was trying to, I was asking Luke. Probably better directed towards you. So you mentioned that there were 44,000 individuals fed from the food bank last year or this year. So I was thinking, oh, that's almost half of Meridian population. So is half of Meridian population getting food from the food bank, or are they feeding people from other communities?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum, what that is, is it's monthly counts tabulated. So as of July, 44,000 people have come through to receive benefit. We're looking at some of the same people of 2,000, 3,000 people that are getting the benefit. And I apologize if that was confusing, but we tabulate that number because that's how, it's based off of what they're giving out on food. And so it'd be no different than 44,000 people getting that particular benefit. So they do have some revolving members that come through.
Thank you.
No, half of Meridian is not going to the food bank necessarily.
Appreciate that clarification, too. Anything further? Mr. Borden.
Procedurally, if the recommendation is set a hearing on the 27th for the public to comment on this proposed amendment, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borden, yes, the procedure is there. It's in our con plan, so I've already set this up and motioned for you. So I just come here to let you know what that recommendation is, and then we'll hold that public hearing.
Okay.
So I don't think there's any additional action for council tonight. The decision would come from the recommendation on the 27th.
Okay.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, item 9D, all things transportation.
Well, kind of sorta. Madam Mayor, members of the council, a couple of things have come up since we did the all things transportation meeting not too long ago, so I just wanted to get them in front of you. I did prepare a memo to that effect that hopefully you've seen, or it's in your packet anyways, dated August 18th. There are really three or four things that I just want to highlight for you. One is an update on ACHD's 2017 to 2021 Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. I just gave to the clerk a spreadsheet that I mentioned in the memo. What that is, is a summary basically of all the intersections and roadways in the county that are in the hopper, if you will, for potential widening improvement in Ada County. On the left-hand side is the number, and I've highlighted the ones, it kind of looks grayed out a little bit in yours, but I've highlighted the ones that are within Meridian or area of impact. So if you'll see, there are quite a few that are in Meridian. Again, I didn't count them, but probably half, roughly, maybe a little bit less, 40% anyways, are in Meridian or area of impact. And again, this is countywide. This is from ACHD. And what this spreadsheet does is it's the way that ACHD begins to look at projects for programming. So it's not the end-all, be-all. Number one doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be in the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan, but it means on the far right-hand column, it scores the best. It has the highest cost-benefit ratio. We've been through this before. I'm not going to go through all the inputs that get to the adjusted cost-benefit. You can see them there. But just to show you kind of where some projects that are in Meridian stand, because I'm not planning on going through all of these projects, but I wanted you to have access to it. And you can see in the, one, two, three, four, the fifth column is the status basically of where it's at. So that's the construction year. You can see if it's, if it's got a year, obviously, that's self-explanatory. PD is preliminary development. That means it's just getting ready to go into the program with a year, but it's not quite there yet. And then UF is even a little bit further out than that, so it would be UF, then PD, and then get a year, and then even further out than that, FTR is future. So again, future is kind of out there somewhere. It's on the radar, but it's not really, it's probably in the CIP, but it hasn't made its way into this five-year programming document. So I did want to just highlight for you some of the projects, the major changes is what we typically call them, because again, I'm not going to run through all the roadways and bridges and intersections and maintenance projects, but some of the more key projects and what changes have occurred year over, or at least potential to occur. and they, what changes have occurred year over, or at least potential to occur year over. So this is the draft 2017 to 2021. So if there's any comments we want to make to ACHD, to their commission, we have until September 9th to do so. So the changes, again, the major changes. New projects, Linder Road from Cuyes Creek Drive to Chindon Boulevard. So this is by the high school basically paramount north to finish that section off. So it's improved to that light at Cuyes Creek, this would improve it all the way to Chindon Boulevard to make that, that stretch complete. The next one, so that one, that one is a new project with a 2021 construction year. Linder Road, Eustick to McMillan, that's entering the program in preliminary development. Lake Hazel and Eagle intersection is entering the program as an unfunded project. Linder Road and the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing is entering the program in 2020. And I'll put a pin in that, because I'll talk about another project here in just a minute. Black Cat Road and the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing upgrade is entering the program in 2018. So two upgrade railroad crossings, 2018 and 2020, done in conjunction with the state and UP, obviously. And then Locust Grove Road, Puffin Street to Overland Road pedestrian improvements enters the program in preliminary development. So there are six new projects there, if you weren't tracking along, there's six new projects that enter the program this year. There are three projects that are advancing, so they already were in the program, and they're, they're either getting a year or advancing in the program with the new year. So Eagle Road, Amity to Victory is going from preliminary development to 2021. Eagle Road and Amity Road, dual lane roundabout, so that one is a, currently a single lane roundabout, upgrading that to a dual lane roundabout from preliminary development to 2021. And State Highway 69 or Meridian Road, Lake Hazel Road intersection advances from unfunded to 2021. And some of these mirror or overlap with what ITD is planning to do. Obviously, there's a, a joint partnership between the Highway District and ITD to do like an intersection improvement in the railroad crossings. So now some of the bad news, delayed projects. By the way, there were three advanced projects there. The delayed projects, Linder Road, Franklin Road to Pine Avenue. So this one is being delayed from 2019 to 2020, so it slips one year. But if you remember, I mentioned the road, the railroad crossing, that's to coordinate that construction, so you don't do the roadway up to the railroad one year, and then the railroad crossing the next year, then you're in a construction zone for almost two years. Wish it could have been the other way, and they could have advanced the railroad to meet up with the roadway project, but, but they're delaying it because of-
Yeah, this, this project has been delayed over and over and over.
That's right, Madam Mayor, this was actually part of the Pine intersection widening at Linder, time flies, I don't remember, three, four years ago when that intersection was reconstructed, and they pulled it out because they couldn't coordinate with UP's contractors and get it done at that time. So yeah, it has been delayed, rescoped, and falls back. So the other one that's being delayed is the 10-mile Amity Road intersection. Some of the notes on why that one's being delayed, some of the roadway widening to get there needs to occur first, it just makes sense to blow out the intersection when it's only a two-lane roadway for two miles down to get there. So doing some of that, the roadway widening first. And then finally, Eagle Road Adaptive Traffic Signal Improvements is being delayed from 2017 to 2018, largely because of ITD. I don't remember exactly why ITD was pushing that back, but I did hear that from, from the state. And then there is one removed project. And again, this kind of goes to that 10-mile corridor. So 10-mile Victory Road to Overland Road was in the program, and they're proposing to remove that at this time, the warrants just aren't there. So it's still on the spreadsheet to continue to track and see what happens with level of service and crashes and those types of things, but it is coming out of the program for now. So that is, again, a very quick, down and dirty summary, major projects, you have all of them again here on the spreadsheet. We historically, you know, again, we sent our priorities to ACHD back in the spring, yeah, in March. And so they've done all the updates to the program and spits back out this, this draft program. And my question, I guess, is do we want, do we have any comments on this, realizing you haven't read the whole document? It's several hundred pages long, I don't know, I haven't read it, just to confess, but Justin probably hasn't either. But realizing you haven't looked at the whole thing, are there any comments just from what I shared with you, or do you want a little more time to think about this, do your own research? It's, it's available, I put a link in the memo that I prepared to look at the document. You can look at just roadways, just intersections, the entire document, bridges, you know, whatever you, they do a nice job of kind of segregating it too, but you can look at the entire document. My opinion, I, I think we thank ACHD, I don't see anything that looks out of place here, in my opinion. It's generally more good news than bad, and I really don't see any bad news. You know, 10-mile corridor is a, is a high priority corridor, but kind of down where they're talking about taking this project out, it's Kuna and really City of Meridian isn't down there, and so as far as our constituency, and just overall, ACHD's looking out for the entire county, not Meridian or Kuna, but again, just with my City of Meridian employee hat on, I don't see that being a big issue at this time. I don't get any phone calls from anyone down there, 10-mile between Victory and Overland, really complaining about that, again, most of the traffic is-
Well, you might have that opportunity next week during our town hall-
That's a good point.
In South Meridian, where we provide comment on the road improvements. And I, I did come across the, the document as I was looking at Mr. March over there, whatever calendar month you were, Mr. Burton, but found the North Meridian Plan, and how we worked with developments that were occurring in that area to progress intersection improvements ahead of the road widening to get traffic moving. ACHD has, has been diligent at looking at those intersections and seeing how we could move traffic through them, but I, I do know that that will be a conversation, and hopefully we've extended an invitation to ACHD to be on hand to hear the, the comments from the south side residents. So anyway.
Madam Mayor, just a little bit on that. So I have not, Justin obviously is here, and we could invite him now. I've been talking with your staff about that town hall and coordinating with them, but I, I don't know that they formally been invited or anything like that. We are asking, just kind of a sneak peek at that town hall, and I actually meet with your chief of staff on Thursday morning, I think, to discuss this a little bit more, talk about some of the questions. And we are going to be putting some roadways out there and say, hey, where, where should we ask ACHD to invest some of their money in South Meridian? So you're right, it is a good opportunity to get some of that feedback at the town hall.
Yeah, we heard it during the listening tours, and Justin, just for the record, it is a week from tomorrow on the 31st at Hillsdale Elementary School, at, beginning at 6:30. And it really will focus on developments and kind of activities on, on the south side of 84.
So that's, that's one item tonight, so again, I'll pause again for a letter-
Hold on for a sec. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, as the southernmost councilman in Meridian-
Southernmost? You don't have a drawl. Sorry.
More southern than y'alls. To your point that you made, that, that 10-mile falling back, it's, it's definitely accurate. I work in, work in Eagle, and I take state to Linder, to Chindon, to 10-mile, and take 10-mile all the way to Amity, even though I live at Locust Grove in Amity, to avoid Locust Grove and Eagle and all that. And I never, traffic isn't a problem at 5 o'clock, 5:15 on 10-mile, so.
Oh, is that in the morning or in the evening?
In the evening. I, I took it today, I left the office at 5:07, and so right there during what should be the mess, 10-mile was really easy. So yeah, I think your, your points are definitely accurate there, and I love seeing Locust Grove so many times on here now.
But just avoid 10-mile starting tomorrow- through the, through Sunday, it's going to be closed.
Well, that's-
It's FYI.
Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
Caleb, is there any way we can get number five moved up?
Madam Mayor.
Traffic today was, talk about no traffic backed up from Eustick to Pine.
Okay, you guys are touching on two of the other things I was going to make you aware of. One was the 10-mile closure, and the other one is an update on Eustick-Meridian intersection and the Locust Grove to Linder. So widening of that intersection, and then the two miles going roughly a mile either direction to tie in with the existing intersection. So tomorrow, ACHD on their agenda is set to approve a contract with Knife River to begin that $7 million project to include the intersection, with work anticipated to start in September. So that's about as quickly as it's going to go, it's not, you know, yeah, that's going, it's, it's happening. So, I mean, I don't want to jinx anything, tomorrow they need to officially approve the, the bid from Knife River, but it looks like they're gonna, so, yes-
I thought it was happening, but then it says 2018 on here-
It will come off this list, once it's, until it's constructed, it stays on the list. So once it's constructed, then, then it'll be pulled off this list, but yes, five is, is moving forward.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And then just again, because it's already been brought up, due to some work at the water treatment facility and some manholes in 10-mile, it's going to be closed for the next couple of days from Pine, between Pine and Franklin on 10-mile. And while I'm at it, kind of going out of order a little bit, Eagle Road also is going to be closed, night work, not closed, they will at least leave one lane open on Eagle Road between Franklin and Fairview, beginning tonight, so don't be on the road, don't go to work too early. Between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, they're going to be adding the additional northbound lane on Eagle Road between Franklin and Fairview. So construction's on there overnight. I don't know how long that project is expected to last, but, but it'll be a night project, so that'll, that should help anyways with the AM and PM peak stuff, so. But got that out of the way, back to the, back to the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. Are there any other questions? Do we want to make any comments to ACHD on the, the draft? And again, if you need more time to look at it, there's a link, we can do that. I've reviewed it, I think, again, I've already told you what I think, so.
Caleb, I think you provided a great overview, and I, I think we need to send out a letter to ACHD thanking them for looking seriously at some of these projects and, and where they can adding the new projects, that's usually unheard of and greatly appreciated. Certainly advancing a couple of these are, are critical. So just our, our thanks and our appreciation that they continue to work closely with our staff and certainly the electeds, that, that is appreciated.
Okay, I'll put that letter together.
Any other comments from council?
Prepare that for your signature. Okay, thank you. So just a couple more things in, and I'm on page two now of the memo. It's programming time of year, so the Idaho Transportation Department's five-year plan is also open and available online for review. Not quite as many projects in Meridian on the state facilities, but I listed them there, and the one I want to just kind of highlight for everybody, again, is US 2026, Chindon Boulevard between Locust Grove and Eagle. I realize that entire corridor is not in Meridian, part of it's in Boise and Eagle, but that is the first step of widening the corridor to Linder and then on to, to State Highway 16 and points beyond. So that, that is in there. I, the reason I bring this up again is just the online commenting system for ITD was down. It's unfortunate, because I know we did a big push to get people to comment on that, and we're doing it again, but the public comment period is open until August 26th now. Was, it closed in July 30th, but their system was down, so if you commented using their interactive map, they didn't get it. So they, they're, they're leaving the public comment period open again. The 26th, yeah. So again, I've listed in the memo the other projects that are in Meridian, I'm not going to read them to you, hopefully you can see those, but-
If you use social media, if you would encourage Meridian residents to reach out and provide comments, certainly we, to avoid if there would be another glitch, we have Adam Rush, his email address, that you can feel more comfortable sending an email rather than going on an online, that was kind of a hassle to begin with, so we do have an email address if you would prefer that, and-
You should make a leakable copy and share it.
We, we do have points that were pulled together from Caleb and Robert, along with the 2026 work group, so we can get that out to you all.
And then again, just, this all kind of goes in together, and all the transportation agencies tend to do this type of thing at the same time of year. So the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, which is through Compass, but it mirrors the state's program for the projects that are in our area, that public comment period is also open, and it's open through September 19th. A couple of projects I want to call out in there is the Five Mile Creek Pathway that Park supplied for as a TAP grant this last year, it's in the program in preliminary development at $388,000. There is a match required with that, but, excuse me, but a large chunk of that is federal to do, so that Five Mile Creek Pathway segment is up by the wastewater treatment facility. And then two other things I want to just, just highlight again. And this project shows up in ACHD's Integrated Five-Year Work Plan, in the state's ITIP, and then also in the tip for the region, but State Highway 69 and Lake Hazel, that's one where I do talk to people on a fairly regular basis. There have been some crashes out there, and so it's a, even though it's only half, I think, of that intersection is technically in Meridian, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Also Hubbard, which is again, south, but Lake Hazel and Hubbard both are shown in the tip, and then the 2026 Locust Grove Eagle. One more thing I just wanted to mention is the Center Cal project, so they're also going to be adding an additional southbound lane on Eagle Road, and that's being pushed back to, to next year. It was supposed to be done this year, and they're pushing it back to fiscal year 2017. So those are kind of the major changes, or just some projects I wanted to highlight for you there. And with that-
Caleb, as you talk about Center Cal, when, when is the plan for records?
Madam Mayor, I have not heard an update on that, but I know that, and I think you know as well, that both the, the plan, the construction drawings have been reviewed and approved by both the Highway District and the City of Meridian. I think it's just a matter of time, and it, the time being this year, I mean, I just don't know exactly when, to give you a date to say this is when they're going to be out there moving dirt, but I've heard this year, so.
Justin, do you know? Thank you for being here.
Always glad to be here, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Justin Lucas, representing the Ada County Highway District, 3775 Adam Street, Garden City, Idaho. As Caleb said, we have reviewed and approved all those plans. The way I understand the STARS agreement, it did not strictly tie them to a, an exact timeframe on that improvement, so really it is in the developer's court. ACHD is pursuing a project extending records north of that section, and so we're hoping that we can coordinate those projects very closely and have a, a, a records from Wainwright all the way down to Fairview, once that project is complete. And timeline-wise, to my knowledge, there's nothing holding them up on the administrative side, this is purely in the, in the developer's court right now. So not really an answer, but best I have tonight.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I just had one other thing just to highlight in the, in the memo. At the last Compass Board meeting, Charlie Roundtree asked me to just bring this information to the council, so you're aware of it. The board just approved the, what they call a change in motion report, which basically is a report card on how they're doing on the elements in the long-range transportation plan, how are we doing as a region meeting these, I think it's like 37 different target areas. And so what I put in your packet are just some snapshots on what the change in motion report is. I, I just copied and pasted from their website, and then I looked at it afterwards, and if you go to the last page, they had some, some glitches as they were updating that. The, the, the numbers that you see on that last sheet are inaccurate, and I let Carl Miller know, and he's since updated it online, but what you see in the packet is wrong. So it says 0% of our population can walk to a grocery store in 15 minutes or less. This is another community in the region, it's not ours, so some of those things-
I was wondering, I read that, I'm like, what?
Yeah, so that's wrong, what you see on the website now is, is accurate, so I apologize for that. But, but again, just want to make you aware of that. But again, just want to make you aware of that, and if you want to see the entire document with those performance monitoring for all the communities, again, there's a link in your packet. And with that, Madam Mayor, that ends my presentation.
Okay, council, any questions for Caleb? I just want to thank you again for your work with ACHD and staying on top of things as usual, so thank you. Okay, item 9E is a city council discussion, and I'll turn this over to Joe Borton.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'll get the conversation started on this. The performance auditor position has came up, I guess, again, more recently when we were addressing budget considerations and trying to knock off center what had been discussed for, quite frankly, a year now, is the idea of an auditor-type position and what those job performance measurements, job duty specifics would be. And trying to craft and create a job description is culminated in what I believe the mayor circulated to everybody last week, if not the week before, of the most recent draft of what a now entitled a strategic performance analyst position might be. How, what functions and essential duties it would perform. It was sent to all of us with an idea that we can provide each other, the mayor, some comments and feedback, and one of the areas that had, and one of the issues, I guess, that started this whole process was trying to facilitate the mayor and council's need to have assistance for those audit-type services, a fresh perspective on a case-by-case basis, either within a department or within a particular program. At least that's where I understood the position was to have started. What I see before me is evolved somewhat to try and capture some of the other areas that the city's trying to address with kind of a focus on data-driven decision-making and trying to have this position provide some of those benefits to the council. One of the bullet points on this also makes reference to, and it's the last one on the draft, that this position would respond to and coordinate requests for program audits and budget performance, requests made by the mayor and/or the council. Part of our discussion, and I guess, I don't know if, guess that's for now, or to provide additional feedback to the mayor or each other, is some comfort, does that capture with enough specificity the need of the council to be able to direct this individual to perform those audit-type services? If you wanted to know in Department X about Program Y and get some data on how it's performed, on the expenses associated with it, just coming up with a type of an example, this position could be tasked by the council to do that. At least that was some of the intent that this position all started with in the first place. So my sense is that's the discussion, is whether or not any or all of us are comfortable with this description. If so, great, and if not, let's talk about specific language that might better capture what the original intent of this was with regards to those audit-type services. All of that past work, Councilman Byrd kind of led the charge and delegated some to Councilman Kavner and I, and we really didn't do.
You did good.
But this is where we're at, so this is the latest job description. Speak now and share your thoughts. We want to make sure this, if this is gonna go forward, that it's something that we're all supportive of, and it captures what we all originally intended.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
It's Joel Roberts.
I guess coming in with this with a little bit late in the game, I'm still not real clear on some things. So where it says in multiple places regarding direction by city council, and maybe Councilman Borton can answer this better, does that mean like we make a motion each time we direct? Because I certainly can't see all of us potentially directing this, and I'm gonna go with position, not person.
I believe when Mr. Neri talked about the ability of council to direct as a body and not as individuals, so it would need to be from the direction of city council as a whole, as a majority. Mr. Neri, did I answer that correctly?
That is correct.
So, Madam Mayor, follow-up. So, Mr. Neri, does that mean it does come each time we, the council would potentially direct that person, it would have to come in the form of a motion?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Joel Roberts, one of the questions that's always been about this position is how, would it function on a day-to-day basis? So the Idaho Code makes it very clear that the personnel responsibilities of the city belong either to the mayor or a city manager, if you're a city manager from a government. So the only way the council has any authority over directing personnel is if they're appointed, because all of the appointed officials of the city work for the mayor on a daily basis, but also work for the council, because your appointment is how they are in their position. What you could do, and again, I think some of it's trying to define the specifics, but I mean, what you could do is have a work plan that the council then approves on what they're doing, or if it issues come up on an occasional basis on that, then they could also come to the council to say, you know, is this the direction you want us to follow? But the person would still work for the mayor as well. So I mean, that's why I think the discussion point has been, is trying to capture the things the council has thought and felt was a need, as well as other needs of the city, to try to cover a variety of different things. If that's not what the group wants to do, that's fine too, but you're right, that, part of, you've highlighted exactly what the problem that the code has left us with, is that it isn't, it isn't, the council isn't meant to manage employees directly. The council can certainly direct the type of work that the position might do, but they don't day-to-day operate by signing time cards, doing performance reviews, approving vacation, those kinds of management things, in addition to directing the workload. So I don't know if that answered your question, but that's why the discussion has been, from the legal perspective, that it really needs to be an appointee, and then a council certainly can then have a role in what the workload is, or what the priorities of the workload could be, in conjunction with the mayor. So, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
As I understand it, this is, it's discussion, we can talk 10 minutes or two hours, it's not, we're not adopting, approving a job description. We just wanted to see who's on what page, and if there's alternative language, or structure, or reporting, or appointment versus, if we haven't shared that with each other, with the mayor, let's keep this ball rolling and share it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
So, turn your mic on.
I'm batting a thousand tonight, Dean. Holy cow.
Better than him saying, turn your mic off.
That's fair. He may do that too, you never know. Couple of thoughts. When I review a job posting, the first things that are on the top I view as the most important. And when you look at essential duties and responsibilities, again, the ones that are first are probably the ones that are most important. And so when I look at this, what I see first and foremost is a lot of this position built around the strategic plan, which I didn't hear Councilman Borton really touch on in his introductory comments. And to me, a lot of what is encapsulated into this position that Councilman Borton touched on, to his point, you find much later in the position. And so to me, what I see is some of the things that we, council both past and present, have talked about as being a area of importance, have fallen to a much lower priority than some of the items related to the strategic plan. I think the strategic plan is important, it has its merits. I question, though, if we are setting a position up for failure, if, you know, specifically related to their involvement in the department, only relates specifically to the strategic plan. I think we also need to have, quite frankly, a frank discussion about where this position does fall in the org chart, specifically related to an appointed position or someone who serves within another department. Personally, I think that this position should be independent. I know that we have talked a lot as council, we've seen that there's been some beneficiaries in this position being somewhat independent. As I have talked to other municipalities across the country, one comment that has rang true, which is that if this is truly what you want to look into and want to explore, that position needs to have a certain level of independent action. So for now, I think that will summarize some of my comments, at least related to some concerns about this position as it is specifically created.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
The original intent, when we started this a couple, three years ago.
Last year.
Oh, no, Mr. Roundtree, I think it was for last year's budget, which was in 2015, but anyway, or 2014. It was, to me, this description, and pardon my ignorance, because it's been, I've only, I only looked for one job in my life, and I didn't even have to have a job description, and that was 60 years ago. So I'm not familiar with a lot of this stuff, but to me, we've got, we got a strategic overseer of the strategic plan, and then we've got an auditor. I think we need to decide whether we want this put into one person, and it definitely should be an appointed person. I'm not familiar with the state statute that Bill's talking about, but I will guarantee you I will get familiar with it, because other cities' council people have appointed people, or I don't know how Boise does theirs, or Nampa does theirs, but they do. Anyway, I think it's something that we need to really continue to find out. First, do we want, do we, I mean, if I look through this, it's gonna, somebody's gonna be an awful, awful good employee and be a lot more disciplined than this kid is. I, I think it's, and I appreciate the mayor getting this out for us and everything, but I think we need to decide whether we want one to do the performance management of the strategic plan, which is a major job in itself, and then an auditor that goes through, what we had discussed was Gadri, and that is the McGadri?
McGadri.
A person like that at the council level. So it's something that we need to continue with. Mr. Borton and Mr. Kavner, I appreciate you guys taking the lead on this, and Mayor, this is great. I, we gotta come up with something, and I don't think one person can do all these duties and responsibilities.
Well, certainly this started out of HR and Finance in December, and then our new CFO, HR, and myself, Robert, and JC sat down with the feedback that we've received collectively and tried to look at and focus on performance and developing better tools to look at program efficiencies and effectiveness related not only to the strategic plan, but performance of giving tools to council to give a better indicator on how, how the investment of not only budget dollars, but also time resources are moving the needle in the direction that the council and the elected officials would like to see it. And so it was trying to find a balance and a reasonable expectation in job performance in being able to do that. And an earlier conversation I had was by drilling into what programs are done in each department and having an understanding of where budget dollars and resource and time talent are invested, it gives a better overview and it builds a sense of trust to go in to do more in-depth audit, whether it's what is the tipping point in triggering a particular new program to do a cost-benefit analysis versus I'm going in and looking if policies are followed in and travel expenses, those kind of things. So I think relationships are important, and this will bring the person at the ground level and working with departments and seeing how they can build better efficiencies and transparency to our citizens and where time and resources are being spent, and in turn, accountability to those programs. So that is the result. We hear the discussion about this position. I think at some point, a decision needs to be made at council. Do you want to move forward with this FTE, or do you want to move forward without it? And anything that would be recommended can go through the budget process in future budget years if it's determined those needs are a priority and a budget funding priority. So certainly, we can continue these conversations, but at some point, I think, we're just looking for a direction.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I'm happy to provide, I guess, direction from my perspective. I think, to Councilman Byrd's point, I think we need to move forward with this position. I just don't necessarily think that the job description that has been drafted is reflective of what the position should be. So that would be my recommendation, is that we continue to move forward, but perhaps either work with the mayor, perhaps either council president or Councilman Borton, and maybe a couple members of city staff to reexamine this job description, to maybe work with an outside HR company to come up with a more accurate job description that meets, I think, the desires of the council. But I still think that this position is warranted, although some of the essential duties and responsibilities and job summary, to me, are not reflected of what this council has previously discussed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I'm glad you beat me to the mic on your second comment. I echo what Councilman Kavner has stated, especially with regards to his point about independence. When I was first introduced, I guess, to the position and as discussions have gone on since, I really liked the idea of it being separate from really the rest of staff, to even to the point of the office or the cubicle being in either the area where our desks are in the council area or in a separate building, so that there's no, there's less opportunity for buddy-buddy and for potential, I guess, embarrassment or retaliation for what that position might bring forth to us. position might bring forth to us. Because I feel like that's the point, is that they need to identify issues, if they're there, and have no fear in bringing them forward, so that we can work on them, rather than being in a position where, they're in a position to make favorites, or to overlook things because they're close to those around them. And so, a previous iteration of the job description, you know, I had liked, again, I agree with Councilman Kavner, I don't think this is what it is that we're looking for.
agrees with me.
We agree a lot.
Mr. Bird.
I think we need to, I think Councilman Kavner had a good point. I think we need to sit down with yourself, and a couple of us, and HR, and work out. I just think this is an awful busy job description, you know, and like I said, I'm definitely not the person to be. I know what I envisioned this employee being, but they're putting it down in a job description. I'm not the one to probably write it. I can sit and tell you, you write it down, and tell me what's legal, what is, you know. But I think we need to go forward with it, but I think we need to sit down yourself. I would recommend Councilman Borton, and Councilman Kavner, and Crystal, and let's see if we can't work out a description that's satisfactory. And then, and then if we, if we don't pick up the management analyst well enough, that's something you can bring back to us for a year, or something that maybe you can add to one of your people. I don't know.
I think the whole challenge has been trying to get an understanding of what, what we're trying to address with this position, and what, what existing positions, directors or finance, is not providing that council sees a full-time need to fill. And I guess that's been the struggle we've had in trying to help this along, is we haven't gotten a clear idea of, number one, what, what do you want this position to do, that other positions are not currently doing? And is it a full-time position, or is it a part-time position? Is this something a consultant could do, if you want the independence? I don't see how you can be an employee and have that separation of not being a friend to anyone in the city. I, it's, some of the things I hear, I'm not sure how we can fill the bits and pieces I've heard tonight. So, I would love to sit down and get some, maybe some, some bites of particular duties and responsibilities, so that we can see if we can craft something, and make sure it's something that would be a position that would be successful. So.
That would be successful for the citizens of Meridian.
For the citizens of Meridian.
Councilmen, y'all agree?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Thoughts that can be explored going forward. The concept of whether it could be appointed or not, I had not heard. I don't know if that's what that would entail. Councilman Kavner's idea of perhaps we expend a little bit of resources and have an outside HR consultant assist and facilitate, and with some hard deadlines, maybe that's worth exploring as well. Of the discussion, those are two things that were, that are valuable, to at least move the ball. I have this, this childhood flashback, and I'm not that old, but the old thermometers, and it was odd but fun when we would break, he'd shake the thermometer, and every now and then it would break. And one of the things you would do on the kitchen counter is you--
Play with the mercury.
Mess with the mercury, and it would move.
Spend your money with it.
And it would be, kind of poke around, and it would always jump around. And I feel like I'm playing with mercury a little bit. Not much fun. We kind of know what this description shouldn't be, but we really don't know what it should be. And so, we can continue to poke around, and maybe we'll get there. But if an outside consultant helps, great, let's do it. And if, and to the extent that there's specific language that says, "This person shall do X," let's say it. Email it, handwrite it, do something, put it down, and say it. Otherwise, we're saying, "Well, we don't want him to do that." All right, well, what do you do? What do you want him to do? Right? And let's, for each other, and the mayor, and maybe the HR consultant can help us do it, provide some clarity. You know, the one sentence, among others, that I thought this captured well, was responding to and coordinating requests for program audits and budget performance by the mayor and city council. Started to capture a sentence that addressed the audit concept. But otherwise, I fear we're going to be playing with mercury for three more years. So, if we have language of exactly what it should do, let's share it.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mayor. And then, I thought, if you can't come to an agreement on what the job description is, instead of playing with mercury for three years, we could put that money into a consulting budget, though as much as I hate wasting money on outside consulting, and I think it's done way too much, you know, as long as it's done thoughtfully, and kind of use that consulting to maybe figure out, not to create a plan, but to do the expectations that you're looking for in an employee, one at a time. Like, this is one of the things that we want him to do, is this. So, hire somebody to do that, and then see if, is that really what we want somebody to do? And you may have to put it together the hard way, by having somebody go through and do it, and eventually may come up with that position, or it may just be something that you only need a consultant every once in a while to take care of.
Mayor.
Ms. Lou Roberts.
It seems like we went to the time and the trouble with the departments and the city to do the strategic plan, and it just seems like if we had somebody that is monitoring and coming alongside with the departments regarding their implementation and process of the strategic plan, that most of those things that we're looking for come under that. That anything regarding efficiencies and things like that should all be, are all incorporated within this strategic plan, to make that and those goals successful.
I see we have work to do, and trying to, first, I guess, we need to understand what the individual thoughts are on, you know, I guess, we were looking at it, that council wanted greater assurance of how we're spending our money, and how that money is being spent is moving the dial, and being fiscally responsible to our citizens, and following policy, and those kind of things. And so, we looked at it in terms of that performance manager, and in looking at it in that fashion. So, I guess there's a couple of different ways to look at this, and what I think would be helpful for each of you is to maybe write three or four bullet points of what those priority expectations are of what you would like a person to do, and that would be a great starting point.
Good idea, Mayor.
So, and then we can, we can huddle with the team that Mr. Bird has assigned, and see if we can start at that point.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further on this one? If not, anything to consider under future meeting topics?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
May I say one thing? If you guys, Mark gave an awful good presentation, but this is a lasting item for you young taxpayers. Make sure you read this book. If you haven't read it, make sure you go through it, and write down notes and stuff. I will get, I will get my things out to you here this week, and I will, I will be talking. But make sure, I don't know how many of you have read it, but look it over. It's a very important item, and whichever way your decision goes, is a very important decision. And you need to be on top of it.
And I think it'd be helpful, Chief, if you can get the PowerPoint to city council for their information. And I know that Councilman Borton mentioned putting an agenda item on for, not next week, because that's a special meeting, but the first weekend, September to discuss response times. I believe you wanted that discussion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think, and it just is part of the master plan discussion, and if something were to be adopted, whether it's the plan and its broader sense, or a portion of which, which is a response time calculation, whether that's in two weeks or in a month.
Yeah, I think there's probably a great deal that needs to be done behind that, and this is another strategic plan topic, is levels of service, and what those cost. And, yeah. So, at least come back the first week to say, this is a proposed timeline to have a discussion at the level that I think council would need to have, when you might be able to come back. So, at least report back on that. Does that sound reasonable, or do you want even more time to even put that together?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Maybe I should ask Lieutenant Overton.
Yeah, he seems to have some input. I think 30 days to come back and have that discussion. I would like to allow 30 days, as Councilman Bird alluded to, to read the report, go through the PowerPoint, have some time to ask questions, certainly reach out to us, we can meet at any time. I know I've received one request already from a councilman. So, I would like that 30-day window period to have that discussion, and read through the report, and then have a discussion on the agenda for that. Madam Mayor, and the scope, Chief, that you're requesting is not a discussion necessarily just on the response time portion. Correct. But broader than that. Correct. Okay.
Okay, very good. I'm sure Mr. Clerk got that all right, on top of it. Okay, item 11 is executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Going to executive session as per Idaho State Code, 74-206-1C, and also 74-206-A-1A.
I'm motioning a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you please cover all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Lou Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.